Welcome everyone to the Wayland School Committee meeting. We are going to get started now. It's 6:05. Please remember that we are recorded by Waycamp. We're going to start out with a welcome and call to order. Then we'll have public comments. We have a special matter and then we will move on with our other items on our agenda. So tonight we have all the members of the school committee present as well as our administrators, Perry Graham, Tom LaFleur, and our superintendent, Dr. Eazy. For the welcome, I'm going to start with some welcoming remarks. Bear with me, I have written them out because I have a lot to say and I want to make sure I get everything.
Can you take a little loud?
Sure, I have some written remarks that I'm going to read as our welcoming remarks. I have written them out, so bear with me, I just want to make sure I get everything included. Since the last school committee meeting, racist graffiti about our superintendent has hurt all of us, particularly our students, staff, and community members of color. As a white man, I acknowledge that I cannot fully understand or imagine Dr. Eazy's pain. My heart goes out to him and his family and we are here to support him. I can stand as an ally in the condemnation of racism. We stand committed to becoming a school district that prioritizes diversity, equity, belonging, and shows that in our actions. As parents, we have all had moments when we want nothing more than to get to our children and hug them and be there for them. December 21st was one of those days. In this moment and for the foreseeable future, Wayland needs to come together as a town and a school community to create an anti-racist community. By working together and setting aside divisiveness, we can start a conversation tonight in our effort to seek understanding and provide thoughts about how we move forward and what actions we will take as we initiate change and work towards a process of healing. It is my hope that tonight, as adults who are invested in the school community, that we will show our students that we are here to respectfully share our thoughts and ideas in a way that explains our perspectives and offers insights to help us move forward and we will listen to seek an understanding of those perspectives being shared. Though we will not arrive at the answers we desire this evening, and that real change will take time and tremendous effort, we want to hear your voices, your feelings, your thoughts, and your ideas tonight. So with that being said, unless there's anyone from the committee who would like to make a statement, we'll move into public comment.
Great.
Okay. For public comments tonight, would you mind just by a show of hands indicate whether you'll be making public comments? Okay. I also have some email comments to read. So we have a pretty full group of comments. We are going to do public comments as two minutes per person. If a group of people get up, the group will get three minutes. And we ask that each of you come up once to allow everybody a chance to make comments. And we will, our public comment period at this moment was scheduled for 15 minutes, but we will extend it beyond that to the extent that we can get as many comments in as possible. So when you do make your comments, please provide your name and your street address and please focus on the purview of the school committee and be respectful. Feel free to come up and in the interest of sort of moving things along, people can feel free to sort of start to come up as well.
My name is Sarah Peterson. I'm 198 West Blaine Street, Erie Wayland. I want to first start by thanking whoever this was that made this comment because it did one thing for our community. It validated what many of us believed was happening but wasn't willing to admit. This person was our cure for hope, hope that this would go away on its own, hope that it didn't exist in the community, hope that we didn't need to do anything else and that it would just resolve itself. They were the cure for hope, but in order to become an inclusive community, we need to all come together to support, like you said, Chris. We need to all come together to support this cause. We have to be honest with ourselves. There is no amount of training that could have prepared Dr. Eazy for a position, a man of color, as a superintendent in Wayland. Yet he works endlessly, day in and day out, to support our students and look how we've rooted him. How can we condemn this act of racism and bias against our leader? We need to lead by example and we need to join this effort to promote anti-racism, equity, and social justice. We need to invoke change together. We, speaking on behalf of my extra minute, Erica Borghi of 10 Russell Road, are socializing the following zone signage proposal for many committees, starting with you, understanding that we need your support for this signage proposal to proceed. So the following proposal, which you have images of on your table that you're welcome to pass around. This proposal is pursuant to advancing diversity, equity, and inclusion in the town of Wayland, specifically throughout all of our communities and not just in the schools. I'm asking that the school committee support purchase and installation of the proposed signage on the table in front of them alongside Route 126 at the Wayland High School entrance. This signage concept, as depicted on the image in front of you, is to promote the greater good. The proposed signage would be funded by community donations pending the school's committee's support. Please pass that around, thank you Ellen. Commitment to assisting further discussion and development of this signage proposal is imminent to having this approved for special permitting. We ask that the school committee express their support and discussion with the Wayland Human Rights Diversity Equity and Inclusion Committee at the next meeting held on January 17th. It'd be extremely helpful to have your support in advance to this meeting. We need to present the signage for design review board for consideration. We, Erica and I, and anybody else who wants to join us, commit to leading a fundraising initiative. One more minute, please. Coordinating the associated documentation for permitting for this signage, overseeing procurement, design development, and installation. Fundraising will be inclusive of all signage posts, brackets, permitting fees, labor, and installation in accordance with requirements of you Wayland Public Schools Committee and Wayland Township.
Sarah, Sarah, I really want to keep it fair for you.
We request that the committee be supporting and approving of this. Ultimately, we'd like this to represent the beginning of further discussions around program and signage incentives that will improve, promote equity, diversity, and inclusion across all the public schools. So consent is important for me first. So we'll follow up in an email. And hopefully you'll join us on January 17th.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Who would like to go next?
Hi, I'm Stachel Stern of Boston 35 Public Schools Lane. At the rally that was held after the message was written on our high school campus, I held up a sign that read "Celebrate Our Differences." I think this is fundamental to erasing racism. I come to you today with some suggestions on how to talk about race and the experiences of people of different races in our predominantly white town. I really do think that it's these individual actions that collectively can change the sentiment. Some of the ideas. One, ask our students with the experience of being African-American, Indian-American, Chinese-American, whatever minority American is in Wayland public schools. The kids live the experience every day and they're usually so honest and direct in their input. I think from that, we can have some learnings about things that we can put into action. Secondly, we hold the World's Fair every other year and it's an event that's targeted to elementary students. I suggest having it annually and engaging the entire school community. Our middle and high school students could work with families at the old event or the elementary kids and maybe it's an opportunity to have a dialogue about the different cultures and the experience of that culture in the community. Third, PTO sponsors cultural enrichment events every year. It used to be that there was a curriculum component that was shared with students as to what they were seeing. Let's bring that back. I think now they go in, they see a show. But it's not about a show, it's about sharing a culture. And I think that that information needs to be given to students and sent home in a document that's shared with parents. Fourth, holidays. Several months ago, when reviewing the Chinese New Year proposal that was added to our school calendar, I asked school committee to consider all holidays that are celebrated in our community. I was really disappointed that this action was not taken and as it was explained to me, it was partly not undertaken because it was causing discord because it appeared that you were prioritizing one holiday over another. It's not about importance, it's really about recognizing who we are as a community. I'll wrap up in just a second. And not addressing it frankly made me feel like the Diwali, which is my holiday, was not as important as Chinese New Year, which was considered. So I encourage you to send out a survey to find out which ones are celebrated and then consider ones that are political mass to add to those holidays and whether or not they're added to those holidays, that there should be communication perhaps in a superintendent's bi-weekly meeting and maybe morning announcements at the school that says, "Happy Diwali." Diwali is a celebration of good over evil. That's why we educate and it's our diversity that makes life interesting and worth. Thank you.
Hi, Kim Wright Hill, Coolwood Road. We've seen a pattern of racist behavior over the last few years in our schools and it should be very concerning to all of us. We need to be asking, what have we done to enable this? How are we contributing and what should we be doing differently? The school committee is critical in setting a tone and it's not what you say, but be honest, we're all against racism, it's what you do. You can't try to downplay it and you can't coddle the bullies. You can't blur out the words and pretend they aren't there. Be honest with yourself about your role. I appreciate the opening statement you just made, Chris, in this regard, but now is when you need to demonstrate that you really mean it. We had a group of teachers stand before you at our last meeting, at your last meeting, talking about what they say is the toxic environment the superintendent has created, an environment they claim is causing excellence in experienced teachers to lead Wayland schools. But this was followed by a school committee member, Jess, reading an email from students and parents who saw things quite differently. They described how the very same teacher the WTA vouted was herself creating a toxic environment for another teacher who happens to be one of Wayland's very few teachers of color. Worse, these teachers knew this because two of the teachers who stood before you weren't in the very same department in which this was happening. How could they do that? And shame on them for misleading the public about what was going on. And shame on those of you who sat by silently while they did so, looking awkwardly, as though you wondered, could Jess have not read this? Why is she reading this? So Dr. Eazy is being investigated. I'm outraged and you should be too. So Dr. Eazy is being investigated for trying to put a stop to that bullying and rather than investigating the bullying or supporting them in the shepherd, you're turning it all on its side and investigating him. What message do you think you are sending and how do you think it contributed to the message painted on the community wall?
I have to say, thank you for having me on and I am too outraged at what happened to me, but I do need to just make my own personal statement. Mary Ann Wolfart, 29 Little Road. I am adamant that the public is due an update on the investigation happening regarding the superintendent and that individual's performance and behavior. It is serious and has affected many lives and we as taxpayers in Wayland deserve an update, it's been over a month. I personally have submitted a public comment about the damage this individual has caused my family over this past year and I am looking for answers. Thank you very much. I was disappointed to see the slant of journalism attempt by Wayland E-News to only portray pro-supernintendent coverage and nothing about those of us devastated by this individual's actions. It is my opinion that a deliberate, this is a deliberate attempt by a former school committee member to have her own platform and not the fairness of the assessment of actual facts. This is pure bias, non-objective, and not good reporting of the facts. Thank you.
General Member, 56 Orchard Lane. I'd like to thank you, Chris, for the statement on behalf of the committee, but I'd especially like to thank Dr. Eazy for the grace, for the forbearance, for the courage, and for the love that he continues to demonstrate every day in his service to our community and especially to the children and students in our school system. We have an immediate need for a healing response so that children in our school system can regain some sense of dignity and of safety as they pursue their education. But we need to understand that that alone will not address the root of the problem, which is the need for healing, the racism which is so evident in our Metco community. And I use the term "Metco community" because Wayland is a Metco community. All of us are parents or co-parents to some extent, if you look at it that way, of all of the children in our community. We're all responsible for the educational experience that every child is exposed to in our schools. We need to begin to actively nurture a much more inclusive and needs-responsive relationship with the families of children of color in our school system. And to do that, we need to start by listening to the students of color. We also need to be listening to the Boston parents. We need to be accommodating the travel, the barriers which make it difficult for them to participate in meetings such as this. We need to provide the space so that we can hear those voices, so that we can provide an adequate healing and ongoing healthy educational experience for all children in our school system. We, I'd like to ask you to continue, but it is no longer business as usual. What we've been doing is not good enough, so I'm asking for your undivided support to our superintendent of schools, to our Metco director, in working with the entire school system to make necessary changes and to ensure that the steps are ongoing in a transformational process to make Wayland a better place to live and go to school. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Doby King and I'm here on my behalf and my son's behalf, who's a Wayland High School student, so I would ask for that extra minute, please. I live on Bow Road with my son. We are part of the 1% of black people who live in Wayland. When I was growing up in San Diego, I lived in a neighborhood comprised mainly of working families and immigrants. My parents are from Mexico and Costa Rica. I was a Metco student. I was bused to an affluent white neighborhood like Wayland as part of a voluntary integration program. After school, I would return to my blighted community. It was like two completely different worlds. All of my high school teachers were white, all of the counselors were too, as was the principal and vice-principal. And while I was in school, microaggressions were directed at me and other students of color. I never reported to school officials all the times that I was viciously told to go back to my neighborhood or that I should stop speaking Spanish because this is America and not Mexico, or that the reason I was admitted to multiple Ivy League universities was because of affirmative action. The school bred a culture in which whiteness seemed a privilege and others like me were marginalized. It created an unequal playing field for students of color who were forced to shoulder these microaggressions with little or no support from staff. I wholeheartedly believe that Wayland schools should work for everyone, even that 1%. Currently, that's not the case. Some of the issues I faced as a public high school student in the 1980s are as true today for my child living here in Wayland. He's been bullied, sickled out because of his ethnicity, and denied an equal education because of a lack of an accommodation necessary to support his learning. These are serious problems that have negatively affected our quality of life, but it's important to note that they predate Dr. Eazy stepping into the role as superintendent. As such, it would be unfair, a single amount, as solely responsible for the problems that students of color face or students with special needs. The honest truth is that I am grateful to have an intelligent black role model in a position of power in Wayland. This is extremely important to my son. Dr. Eazy has been the target of repeated microaggressions since he first started the job. Then to add fuel to the fire, he's under investigation for subjective allegations about his tone and communication style. This is a double standard. It's also unprecedented and I fear that we're walking down a very dangerous road into the all-too-familiar angry black person stereotype. This is a negative stereotype that dates back to slavery days and perpetuates a myth that black people are unduly aggressive, ill-tempered, illogical, overbearing, and hostile. I'm sure some people view me that way as well. In fact, I know they do. This was feedback that I received while running for select board last year. I was too black, I was told, for some. We have a long way to go in terms of making black families, town employees, and committee members feel welcomed, supported, and valued in Wayland. Regardless of our personal feelings for or against Dr. Eazy, it doesn't justify the racist graffiti attacking him. Such cowardice acts are meant to dehumanize people and instill fear. So when I hear my town leaders and neighbors say, "We denounce racism," or "This is not Wayland," referring to the racist graffiti, my response is, "Yes, this is Wayland." It may not be the Wayland you personally experienced, but it's real and it hurts people. We should ponder this uncomfortable truth and let it simmer for a moment. What kind of Wayland do we want to be? Hopefully, it's a Wayland that values everyone and is willing to make room at the decision-making table for people of color to have a voice in our town affairs. Thank you.
My name is neighbor Reed Wallace. I'm the former Metco director here in the town of Wayland. I served this town for 19 years. I never thought I would be standing in one of these hallowed halls at the Wayland High School. I never thought I would return to this district after the way I left this district. But when I found myself in tears from watching what I saw on TV, I told myself I had to come back. Quite a few number of my peers are in this room with me right now. I sat on committees that hired quite a few people in this room. And all I can say to you is this. I challenge you to look at your system that you have in place. Even though I left this town better than I found it when I came here 19 years ago, it saddens me to see that not much has changed. I'm not surprised that Dr. Eazy is being investigated because I too was investigated to the highest level possible. To the state, I went in front of the state. I had to go in front of... I had to endure an investigation at the state level which questioned my integrity, my morality, and I'm still standing here. This man was born in the same parish that I was born in on the island of Jamaica. How ironic. We're from the same parish in Jamaica. We're from the same place. And I say to you, this is no coincidence. This is a system that has been perpetrated for years, that has been supported for years, but I can honestly say to you that Wayland is not a bad place. I didn't want to leave Wayland. I believe in Wayland and that's why I'm here tonight, because there are people in your community who abhor what is being done to this gentleman. And I say "gentleman" because he hasn't reverted to the angry black man role that is expected of most of us when we step into a place of authority because somehow, all words don't mean the same. When we say something, we're saying it because we're black and we're angry. We're not saying it because we're qualified and we can assess what is happening around us just like everybody else. And so I come here tonight and I say to you as a school committee, look at what you do. Look at what you did that precipitated those two words written on the side of that building. You gave people the permission to step out and say, "This is how I truly feel." Check your belief system. What do you believe about people of color? And until you check your belief system about what you believe about children of color, all of my babies who rode in on that bus that morning, it pained me because I know some of them saw it. Because if that's what you believe about this man, who is one of the most qualified superintendents you've had in this district, look at his credentials and look at the people who came before him. And if that's what you believe about him, that's what you believe about all of my little babies who are sitting in this room. So I say to you, check your system, check your hearts. What do you believe about people of color? And that's why I'm here tonight. Thank you very much.
It's impossible to follow that up. Thank you. Hi, my name is Caroline Higgins and I live at 26 Parkland Drive. First of all, I just want to say thank you to all the people of color who have shared their own personal stories because I think it takes a tremendous amount of courage and you once again are putting yourselves out there in front of a bunch of white folks and sharing your pain in front of us, which I know you have to do time and time again. So I want to thank you for that. I also want to say that it feels like an incredibly tricky time for our community. Tricky is Brian Jones' word that I've learned. Local school never said tricky before that, but it just, it feels like an impossible time in Wayland right now. What was written about Dr. Eazy was completely dehumanizing and unacceptable and I think there were a lot of people of color who spoke to us white folks, we need to do a lot more listening, and said, "That was not surprising." And I think there was a very eye-opening moment for many people because we were shocked and surprised because we don't have to, we're not the victim of institutional racism or blatant racism, right? We have the power. It's also very uncomfortable to not understand what's truly happening with the current investigation. And I understand that that's just the position we're in because it can't be out in the open. I hear so much pain in this room right now and I think on top of the year we've had as a town with so much loss within the community, the pain continues. I think it's very hard to try and understand how to support Dr. Eazy as a human being and to try and be somebody who is taking a position in this town of trying to listen to all the stakeholders involved. I want to say I have the utmost respect for the administrators in this community and frankly for many people sitting right in front of me. I know many of you very well in this room. And I think what this community needs is truth, it needs to listen, and we need to heal. I'm just a little surprised by, I guess this room is almost full, I guess I thought it would be overflowing, but it's a tough position that many people are in and it would be really helpful if we could have the truth. So I think as soon as the findings and the investigation are available, there needs to be an opportunity for the whole community to listen, to listen. And it would, I don't know if this is possible, but I would like to hear from Dr. Eazy. I would like to hear from the administrators. I would like them to be able to heal because we were all so excited, so excited when we hired you and it feels terrible right now. And so on behalf of the you. And it feels terrible right now. And so on behalf of the white allies and co-conspirators in this town, I want to say thank you for being here and thank you for helping us work through this because I can't even imagine what it feels like to be in your situation. And I want to say thank you to the school committee because this has sucked for all of you. And I want to say thank you to the administrators who have also had to be in really tough positions. We need to hear everyone's voice. That's the bottom line, and we need to do more listening.
So, probably a few more comments?
Yeah. Hello, everybody. Thank you so much for holding this meeting. I'm Yamni Ranjan, West Plain Street, Chair of Wayland Human Rights Diversity Equity and Inclusion Committee, for short H R D E I C. H R D E I C stands in solidarity with Dr. Easy and with all black, indigenous, and other people of color in the community whose sense of safety was violated by the racist graffiti directed at Dr. Easy. The very public location of the graffiti violated black community members' right to be free from discrimination and fear, and exposed young people to hate. We joined the Select Board, School Committee, and other town entities in forcefully condemning this racist act. A month before the graffiti was found, H R D E I C sent a letter to the Select Board related to the School Committee's investigation of Dr. Easy. In the letter, we noted that Dr. Easy is black and the School Committee members are white, and that whenever people of different racial identities have a conflict, race is always in the room, whether we name it or not. The conflict leading up to the investigation may not have been about race, but it includes race, which adds a layer of complexity to the situation. I would let my vice chair and colleague finish the rest of the public comment.
I'm Karen Blumenfeld, Oxbow Road, Vice Chair of the Wayland of the H R D E I C. Following last week's graffiti, the H R D E I C wrote another letter to the Select Board to be transmitted very soon. We noted that the racist incident is a reminder that while outward signs of personal racial animus may be less visible in Wayland than in the past, racism persists and must be understood in its many forms. In our letter, we recommend a series of actions, including an incident reporting line, which will soon be launching, a townwide equity audit, a town diversity, equity, and inclusion position, diversification of town staff boards and committees, and more. The H R D E I C will continue to make advocacy recommendations to the Select Board to whom we report, and we look forward to working with the School Committee, Select Board, and the community toward building a culture in town where all people of all ages and identities, racial or otherwise, feel safe and secure to live, work, study, worship, or spend time. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Anne Brensley, Bartonville Road, Wayland. Really fast, but a strong point that I really wanted to stress. My only real reason for coming and pushing this is I'd really like us to find out and get to the bottom of what happened and who is responsible. I know that feels very pinpointing. These are community members, but Wayland can't be the community that had this happen and let it go. It can't. And I know people will say, "Oh, this is an issue. It's going on. There's an ongoing investigation." But what I found is that if you want to get justice, the community has to force it and require it and say, "No, we need to know who did this. We need to hold them accountable," and it can't happen. And I can promise you that if a community member is held responsible, the next person will hesitate in ever doing it. So please, please, everybody, please ask for that. Because I think if we can at least be a community that said that some sort of justice was held, it will resonate. We'll at least be that. That's it.
Hello. Jeff M. Robbins Clark, 18 Brooks Road. This is a bureau at the Wayland Middle School. It says, "A threat to justice anywhere is a threat to justice everywhere." And we are here. I want to say, I believe Dr. Easy is the victim of a poisoned well. When he came on board, there were a lot of difficult situations in the Wayland schools. Almost the first session, maybe the first, if it was not the first, it was the second, was... And there's so many examples. I'm going to limit it to three minutes and just give two or three minor examples. But there were a couple teachers who decided that they weren't going to teach the last month of the school year. And they decided that students during COVID had done, apparently they had a pre-test and did very poorly on a final exam. I was told the average score on a final exam practice was a 28. Teachers were upset. They didn't teach last month. They said, "We taught. It's your job." A month later, the students in that class, in the classes, the college pre-calculus classes, June 2021, took a final exam. The average score on that exam was a 44. It was an F minus, minus, minus. And nobody cared. Nobody said anything. And Dr. Easy came aboard and thought that was wrong. The teacher should have been teaching last month. They probably should have been teaching every day, giving a quiz every day. And the end result was he asked and had those scores removed and let them prove his student's grade. Turns out, it proved no one's grades. I made a request for that document, provided to the School Committee. I asked it to be posted. It hasn't been posted yet. That was the beginning. And the response from teachers was a poisoned well. They started attacking Dr. Easy. In fact, a letter was written to the School Committee by the Wayland Teachers Association saying, "Mr. Dr. Easy was tampering with grades." The response from the School Committee was silence. There was no response. Should have been outraged. He wrote a letter back. You ignored that point. It was the most black-and-white, wrong thing that was happening. Last week, we had in front of us a teacher in a department say that a teacher was leaving because of Dr. Easy. Yet, we heard letters after letters saying there was bullying going on by that teacher and other teachers. And that wasn't even the most outrageous part. The most outrageous part is they reported that to the department head and then to the principal, and the problems they wrote continued. Where's the outrage? I didn't hear any discussion by any member of the School Committee other than just reading that in response. Why are we not outraged? Dr. Easy has been accused of using a tone discussing bullying at a school committee meeting. Is there a history of that? No. Are there any other incidents? No. Was there sexual actions happening? No. Was there any physical actions happening? No. He used a bad tone according to teachers at a meeting. Frankly, if we're discussing bullying, what was going on has happened in another school, you guys should be outraged. Where's the outrage? In fact, I argue there's something wrong with you if you're not outraged by teachers who should be the role models bullying other teachers and students. Where's the outrage? I guess it's okay in Wayland. You know, I grew up in Wayland. My wife grew up in Wayland. My daughter went to Wayland school. I'll step down.
Hi, my name is Erica Tuchin, 29 Lake Road. I'm the parent of a sixth grader and a ninth grader, just moved to Wayland in May expressly for the middle school and the high school. And it was a decision that wasn't taken lightly as we moved from Framingham, where I had intended to live expressly for my children to grow up with more racial, ethnic, and socioeconomic diversity than I had. And so I was really pleased that we moved in time to see the middle school night last year and to see how many symbols there were of what an affirming community there is with, you know, Black Lives Matter signs, pride flags. I've told Mrs. Gavron, just even her using pronouns to me signaled what an affirming community it was or is. That said, symbols only go so far, and we need action. And I think one of the first actions, as somebody who feels like still an outsider to Wayland and having looked at many posts on the Wayland Community Forum, having heard from my children announcements or things in school, there was a resounding chorus of, "This isn't Wayland." And while I can't speak to what Wayland is as a newcomer, this, I, you know, I live in Massachusetts, and I live in the United States, and we all like to say, "This isn't us," but obviously, it is. And so I think the very, an important thing is that we really all need to be looking at ourselves and looking at both systemic and institutionalized racism and our own personal implicit bias. And seeing is that, you know, we're at the School Committee, so speaking to things within the purview of the School Committee, I think one thing that I think is essential, and while, you know, some may say this may belong to, you know, curriculum, I think what's essential is that there is prioritizing and funding of mandatory professional anti-racist and implicit bias professional development for all staff, not just new coming staff and not just Unit A or whatever that unit is called. I believe that if every staff member and every School Committee member should have mandatory professional development conducted, that is tested, like you do with the conflict of interest thing, we do that every year as public employees. But we should be having mandatory PD for everybody. Thank you.
Are there any other comments for public comment? Okay. We'll move on then to... Oh, wait. I'm sorry. I actually have a couple emails that were sent. Okay. This is an email from Ben Downs of Concord Road and the president of the Wayland Community Pool. "We cannot describe how angry and disappointed we are by the racist graffiti that was discovered at the Wayland Community Pool. The community pool is a private, not-for-profit funded by program fees and donations from the public. The pool is truly a community asset used by people from all over the Metro West area. To have a community asset defiled with such reprehensible speech is truly disheartening. We, as a community, are much better than this, and we hope that the individuals that is or are responsible will consider getting help. We will support the police, the schools, and the town of Wayland in its investigation. Finally, we want to acknowledge how hurtful these acts of hate are to the whole community, but especially to members of our black and brown community. On behalf of the community pool, we want Dr. Easy and his family to know he has our full support and acknowledge the personal impact this has had on them. Thank you, Benjamin Downs." Let me see. I just want to check on one thing before I read this. Okay, yes. This is a letter from Chanel Daly, 55 Tacoma Street, and this is an email she sent to Dr. Easy, but she asked that it be read as part of public comments. "As the president of the Boston Parent Council, I have worked with you over the last year and a half and have nothing but good things to say about you. Unfortunately, because of my role with Wayland Mecca Parents, I received pictures of the racial graffiti first thing in the morning. My spirit was hurt, and I can only imagine what you felt that morning. I can only imagine what our children felt at the middle school last year when the same type of graffiti was noticed in the bathrooms. I applauded your swift actions last year to help our children feel better, feel safer at school. I later heard your actions were unsavory to some of the Wayland middle school staff and admin, quoting, 'The school atmosphere didn't feel the same.' It was gut-wrenching for me to hear, especially after talking with several distraught middle school parents who have entrusted Wayland Public Schools as a safe education option for their children. My children have been in Wayland Public Schools for over fourteen years. I attended Newton Public Schools, and I have never seen such a public display of disrespect towards a superintendent, especially in academically rigorous communities. As a black woman and mom, I am so sorry. I know that you have come here to be a change agent, and change is a difficult thing, but racism is racism. Wayland needs to do better to be an anti-racist community. Personally, I've been in touch with the Wayland's H R D E I C, and I have encouraged other parents to attend and share their voices to help make a change. Unfortunately, we always have to fight. We fight for equity in education. We fight for human decency and respect, even when we are tired and just want to make it through the holidays. We can't have peace. We have to fight. Last December at the middle school and this year at the pool house. Wayland, I am exhausted." Okay. So those are all the public comments. The next section of the agenda is a special matter discussion concerning racist graffiti found at the community pool on December 22nd. So I just want to make a few, say a few things before we dive into the conversation here. Just for everybody to know, this is the committee's first chance to discuss this item, the racist graffiti, as a group since we cannot have discussions outside of our meetings. So please be patient as we walk through things together. We need help, and we feel really fortunate that we have resources within the schools and we have H R D E I, the H E R D E I Committee in town. My hope is that we will discuss how to put our anti-racism statement into action. As a committee, I think we all just sort of need to keep in mind that we are here to support the next steps and the actions, but it's the educators who will do the planning and the implementation. Before the School Committee starts our discussion, we are going to have some comments from Mecca. And so I was hoping that Latoya and Caroline can come up to the table. Tom and Perry, if you don't mind, go take your seats. Latoya Rivers is the director of Mecca. Caroline Han is the director of Diversity, Equity, and Belonging. So if they can come to the table and join us, and then after we hear from Mecca, Dr. Easy, I think that you should run to the seat.
I'll just do it for my...
Okay. Oh, you're doing it for your... Okay. So Latoya will start your statements, and then Caroline will jump in and help us with some of our questions.
Sure.
Thank you for, thank you for being here, both of you. We appreciate it.
Thank you for having us. I just want to be clear that I'm the director of Mecca. All right. Director of Wayland Mecca. Shout out to my previous director for coming and the support that she has given, laying the groundwork as always. I actually want to call up some Mecca students who are going to come up and speak on behalf of Mecca students. I invite all current Wayland Mecca students who are here to stand in solidarity with her as she reads the statement on their behalf. I am honored and so impressed and just blessed to be there, Mecca director. If you all would like to, please stand so they can acknowledge your presence, that you are supporting her then as they read this statement on your behalf.
We live in Boston, Mass, and we are participants of the Mecca program here in Wayland. We are reading this statement on behalf of Wayland Mecca students in response to the past month's events and to share the impact it has had on us as Mecca students.
What happened Wednesday morning, December 21st, 2022, should never happen to anyone despite their skin tone, religion, or race. We don't deserve to see something so hateful in a community who travel for an education, in a community that is claiming to be welcoming to everyone. That word, the N-word, does not describe us, nor does it represent us. Unfortunately, that word is used frequently in the Wayland community. Ignorant students have been using it for years, and our schools have done nothing to educate the students on the hateful meaning behind it. We shouldn't be surprised that they continue to use it, and many are becoming numb to it, and sadly, this is not the first for the last time. Students of color, we, as the Mecca students... Thank you, Karen. We shouldn't have to go to school where we are trying to receive a better education and are constantly faced with ignorant racism. We are more than our skin color, and for some, to justify students' hate crimes against us is wrong. The town needs to understand the history of the N-word and teach those who ignorantly use it. We shouldn't be experiencing ignorance like this ever. I think Wayland needs to better educate others on the word and how it impacts the community and students.
I also didn't find it fair for us as Mecca students to have SIG, which is Culture Identity, classes. I completely understand that we need to learn about our history, but at the same time, there are so many students in the Wayland District that have not taught about black excellence. When they are taught about black history, it's mostly the most, the more popular MLK, Malcolm X, Ruby Brits, or Ronan Prince. The students of Wayland need to be more educated about black history. Students do have an option to take a race class as an elective in senior year, but it shouldn't be more than an elective. It should be in the curriculum. Many of us are aware that the School Committee meetings discussing Dr. Easy's work performance and that they were launching an investigation into his performance. We were all shocked and impacted because of this. Dr. Easy was our first black superintendent, and seeing him targeted hurts us the most. We heard there were accusations against him for bullying people he works with, and Dr. Easy is being held accountable for his actions. And many people don't like him... And many people don't like him for that, so they're trying to take him down. We also think a part of the accusation is because he's a person of color. Dr. Easy worked for the position he has and is trying his best every day. There are a small percentage of superintendents of color in Massachusetts, and having him at Wayland Public Schools is a blessing. One MECA student shared that the teachers are angry with Dr. Easy and implied that it was the reason for the graffiti. We think the graffiti was a tactic to scare Dr. Easy out of his position. Multiple incidents have targeted people of color, and it's getting tiring. When we are, the, when are the hate crimes going to stop? We feel like the school doesn't do a lot about it. They brush it off after a while like it was nothing. Many of us as MECA students don't feel safe or comfortable coming to school because of the color of our skin, but we will not let this word tear us apart.
When the district called students from class for an emergency meeting, most of us didn't feel comfortable in our advisory to speak up about it because we were going to, we were going to be stared at. In addition, most MECA students find it hard to open up to the students in our community because they were never taught to respect each other's differences. Yet sadly, most teachers will only touch on the topic of going deeper into the teaching their students the importance of our history and culture. They believe we MECA students could lean on other classrooms, yet there was never an environment where we felt welcome or that our opinion had an impact in the community. This is why we need our classrooms to be, our, this is why we need our affinity place, affinity base, the MECA room, to provide us an opportunity to connect and process when these types of event happen. If our classes use time to educate our peers on the history that highlight these horrible things, maybe they would have a better idea of why they shouldn't be doing this. And like Michelle Obama said, when they go high, when they go low, we go high.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I just wanted to, I wanted to thank both of you for coming up here and speaking and telling us how you feel. I really appreciate it. Thank you both.
And thank you as well. The bus was held, Mr. Lane waited. So if you guys wanted to catch what you could, if you want to stay up there. Yeah, I'll drive. Next up, we have representatives from our Boston Parent Council.
Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Chanel Daly.
Susan Young.
Hayeisha Stevens.
And we make up the Boston Parent Council. And we just have a collective letter that we all write together in solidarity. It's hard enough being a parent. Harder is being a parent of students who already face long commute and shorter homework times every day, also face racism. Hours before winter break, our children should be at their desks, daydreaming about the presents, attempting to solve math problems. Instead, our children are not at their desks or even in their classroom. They're at rallies, attempting to solve a much bigger problem, and this is not okay. As MECA parents, we make sacrifices to put our children on buses early in the morning, send them to Wayland, and trust they are receiving a solid education. We too want to close the education gap. How do we expect our children to flourish in a school community that doesn't seem safe for Black or Brown children? How can we possibly close the education gap when our high school students are defaulted into introductory level courses that are not on par with college preparatory courses? In this community, teachers have been overheard saying MECA students are being pushed on them. Racist graffiti is found on the walls of the town building and on school bathrooms. Racism even found its way into remote learning during Zoom classes. This is not a healthy learning environment for any student, especially Black or Brown students. As parents, how can we continue to trust this environment to support our children towards higher achievement? What are Wayland students learning when a Black man at the highest level of leadership in our school system is attacked, undermined, publicly and privately ridiculed, and then racially attacked? Wayland hired a qualified Black man and Dr. Easy as their superintendent. After one year's service, we MECA parents have witnessed a martyr-type of witch hunt. Dr. Easy has been the center of racial tension, been dragged through the mud in seemingly a petty investigation despite a performance review demonstrating better productivity in one year than the previous superintendent accomplished in a four-year tenure. We are calling for an end to this costly investigation of Dr. Easy. Efforts and resources to help students in Wayland are better devoted elsewhere. We do not need appropriate response. As parents of students most affected by the racial violence in Wayland, we demand one. We are demanding the town seek qualified diversity, equity, inclusion instructors and anti-racism thought leaders to help see the root causes of the racial problem in Wayland and to help generate solutions. MECA parents and students should not bear the burden of experienced racism nor, and nor be expected to educate the Wayland school community about dismantling system, systematic racism. We are demanding the school system to protect affinity groups for our students, continue to provide a protective and safe space for our children who attend desegregation programs such as MECA because we have yet to be truly integrated into a healthy and inclusive school system. Standing in unity, we have decided not to send our children to school on Tuesday, January 17th. Our children will stay home. Our protest is to demonstrate we are, our children are losing precious learning hours due to racism. We need to change this. We are asking those in support of the MECA program to think of joining our decision and absence. MECA families are doing their part to make Wayland truly integrated. Anti-racist school community, we are all, where all students feel safe and welcome. We are asking for the Wayland Public Schools to do their part in solidarity, parents of Wayland MECA.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Appreciate it.
And lastly, in solidarity with both our students and the parents, as the director of the program and having had meetings and conversations with both, I have my own remarks to make. So following the horrible instance of December 21st, I, like many, were sent reeling in many ways, experiencing a flood of emotions from hurt to disappointment to concern and responsibility. As the MECA director, I had an immediate, I had to immediately put my emotions to the side and begin the task of assessment, processing, and planning to move the students and their families of this program forward. But as many, but also as a member of this Wayland administrative team, I had to honestly assess how we got to this place. After meeting with both the MECA students and parents, I was quickly struck by the fact that in each meeting, they all felt, myself included, that there was a direct correlation between the events of the previous month and the graffiti that was written on the wall. I couldn't help but recall sitting in the November 10th school committee meeting, hearing several supporters of Dr. Easy question the method of having a sitting superintendent brought before the school committee for what seemed to be a public questioning of his ability to do his job based on one anonymous accusation that by many accounts seems to be an HR matter. That in this meeting, the floor then opened to a very public bashing of his character and various personal assaults to which he could not defend himself. With no recollection by anyone in attendance of a previous superintendent enduring any such treatment in their tenure and him being the first Black superintendent in Wayland, it was not hard to, for the connection to be made that this was a racial issue. The graffiti on the wall was not a surprise to those who felt this way, but rather more of a foreseeable consequence. While I can sympathize with those who may not have at that time had the lens, either from a lack of DEI education and/or lived experience, to see it before, I would implore you to reconsider that act now as you denounce the actions of December 21st. Neither should have happened, and both were assaults on Dr. Easy. Both were racist. Dr. Easy, thank you. Dr. Easy and many leaders and change agents of colors before him were asked to come in and make changes, forcing difficult conversations and holding people in the community and district accountable. I truly believe that was prompted, that's what prompted this attack and the others like, the others like it that he has had to endure in his tenure. I'm encouraged by his resolve and honored to be serving as a member of his leadership team. I was personally in a similar situation as many leaders of color have been and charged to shine a light on changes that needed to happen. And it was okay until it wasn't okay. When you charge a leader of color to shine such a light and hold people accountable, you must also hold yourselves accountable for protecting them in doing so. You must hold yourselves accountable for supporting them as they make those difficult decisions, and you must make them yourselves. As I am now asked what should Wayland do, I simply say to you all, you must do better. I, along with the MECA community, stand with Dr. Easy and those in the Wayland community who brought him in, expecting and wanting him to make things better for all members of this community, to call out areas of weakness, address them, and make them better. My belief, hope, and ask is that those members of the community will speak up now, loud and bold, as bold as that writing on that wall, to ensure that he is allowed to do just that, to do his job and make Wayland better. As we move into processing, we need to recognize where we fall short. I'm saying we, and I hope everybody recognizes that because as the director of this program, as was stated earlier, we are the Wayland MECA community. So we all have to own that. And as we move into processing, we need to recognize where we fall short and are doing a disservice to all the students in this Wayland MECA district. When a situation like this arises, it isn't simply about what thing or things we can do as the thing and things that get done are done and gone, and the events will repeat as they have. It should be about what are we doing and can continue to do to enact the ability to endure what may come. Racism has been here and elsewhere and will continue to be here and elsewhere as you all, as a community, are taking part in a desegregation program. You need to understand that and that all the students, both those who live in this town and those who are bused in, deserve the education as to why it is needed and the history that it is built upon. We also have students being received by teachers who are not fully equipped for the education they need to be preparing these students for. We wouldn't expect a teacher who simply loved math to teach the course without a formal certification or training, but we expect teachers who believe in equity to be qualified to navigate an impromptu conversation about racism. This shows a lack of value placed on the topic by us as a district, and we need to do better. While this is happening, there is a need for students to actively, there's a need for students who are actively experiencing this trauma to share the experience and conversations in safe spaces with other students who are experiencing the same. That is why we need and have to have to value the affinity spaces that our students spoke about and our parents requested earlier. Many districts have been under attack and challenged for the idea of having affinity spaces, but Wayland needs to stand strong and actively support having them. You heard the parent group announce their Day of Impact, and I want everyone to hear it as that. I was able to hear the conversation that our Boston parents had regarding their Day of Impact, the day of keeping their children home on the 17th of January. They called and asked for parents who support, all parents in the district who support the MECA program and the idea of supporting the MECA program and its kids and its families, and doing the same. The idea, the idea being that you take your children, that you keep your children out of school, but you do something impactful with your children that relates to the idea of this program and educating your children because, like they said, our children have lost a lot of time in dealing with these racist issues that have happened in the school. So one day out of school to show them that impact is not going to harm that education at all. If anything, it's going to show them how important you as a family take this idea of educating them and building them up as a community. It's also going to show those MECA students who aren't here that day that, you know what? We stand with you. We support you and your families. That in that absence, we see you because a lot of this feels like they're not seen. That's what I've heard. I've heard that from our youngest students in K-5 to our oldest students in high school. This continues to happen. And I, as MECA director, am not stating that you have some magic cure, that is not going to happen. I've been asked repeatedly, and I'm sure that Ms. Mabel Wee Wallace has heard it repeatedly in her years as a director as well, and doing this program and doing this work. I have demands on myself. I'm bringing families into these districts time after time. I'm bringing children into these districts time after time. And when I look them and their families in the face, I do not claim that these districts are not racist, that they don't have racists within them, as none of you should. But I do believe that there are people within these communities who want better and will do better. I have met them. Many of them have come to my office and sit in my, in my office defending our program and our kids and asking how they can do better. This is how we do better. Standing in solidarity and building those things and making them a part of your program, your curriculum in your school, not a standalone side group or meeting. It can't be a separate event. That's what shows that it's a separate standalone thing. It shouldn't be that. It should be a part of what you do. If it's important, you make it important. Math is not a subset. Math is not something that happens on occasion. It's a part of your curriculum. You have a desegregation program, yet there's not one mandatory class, as our students spoke about, that requires every student in this district to learn about it or learn about the history about why it's needed. You're participating in it, and your children don't understand the value in it. That's very important, and it's not something that just your Boston students need to know. So as MECA director, I implore you to learn those things because for me, that's where I stand. And as a committee, I mean, one of the first things that hit me was the fact that I stood there and asked and got the permission to expand the program to bring in preschoolers. So what are we going to say to those families and those parents? I think Wayland, as Mabel said, you have a potential to do something phenomenal here, but it's all about your actions and not just those words and not just those flags, as one of the parents pointed out. So that's, I guess I didn't end as eloquently as I started, but...
Thank you.
Thank you.
We really appreciate it. Would you mind the affinity spaces that you were talking about in some of the other districts? And would you mind just kind of giving us a little more information about that issue that's going on right now?
Sure. So affinity groups and spaces were challenged in some districts, I believe state-wide, if not across the country. Because what's being challenged is the idea that you have a group where some people aren't allowed to attend. So an affinity group by definition is supposed to be a group of people who share a commonality. And so, for example, if we had a Black-Brown affinity group, it would be for a group of Black students to come together to discuss issues affecting to them. There are students who may say, well, wait a minute, you're calling for a group for Black and Brown students, but I'm Spanish, or I'm Latino, or I'm white, and I want to attend. And so districts, some districts felt like, nope, we should allow for all students who want to to be able to participate. And so that's been challenged. What I've asked for and what the students are saying and what the parents have said is that, no. I mean, I think in principle and what it stands for, and it doesn't just have to be a racial affinity group either. I mean, I think that's the other thing that you should keep in mind. The idea of affinity groups and affinity spaces, it really is to benefit that group. I mean, I actually liken it to more of a counseling situation anyway, so you wouldn't have a counseling group that's violated by anyone who hasn't suffered or dealt with that affliction, and no one feels any way about it. You also, if you want to dig deeper into the history of it, I mean, there's something to be said for not wanting students of color to gather without students who aren't of color in their room. That's a deeper history lesson. But it's definitely something to consider, and I think that's part of what we're asking for as well. It's that they continue to have that safety, not just to have it because obviously they can do it, but it's to have the support of the school and acknowledge it and saying, "We want you to have it." And again, not just your students of color. I think affinity groups in general, something that the district should support openly.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Thank you very much.
I was just going to add, if you're looking for a local and a specific example, Wellesley faced a lawsuit by some organization, I think, coming out of Washington, D.C., and it was in response to an Asian-American and AAPI affinity group that was meeting to support students of Asian descent during COVID and the spike in anti-Asian hate crimes and racism. And what Ms. Rivers just said was-- white parents objected to a group that was specifically for a racial affinity group. And I don't know what the outcome-- I don't know how the legal case was solved. I just do know that Wellesley ended up accommodating whatever that concern was to say that any student can join or come to an affinity group, which is a-- speaking as someone who facilitates affinity groups, it isn't the same even one white person in an affinity group for a particular group of color. It changes. It does change-- it can change the conversation and the dynamic, no matter how progressive, how anti-racist that person is. So again, the loss is borne by the historically marginalized group.
And if I were just to give an example so that folks can understand the dynamics of the groups. So there are several private schools that have affinity groups. Affinity groups can be, depending upon-- like, it could be for students who have same-sex parents. It could be for-- it could be an LGBTQ affinity group. It doesn't all have to be race-based. But in terms of what can happen in those meetings, if you think about some of the issues that we just described in terms of racial discussions, let's say, for example, the incident that happened on the 21st. Going through that, I know for myself, I'm an adult. When I saw what was on that wall-- you just saw, you know, Ms. Mabel W. Wallace, as well as some of our parents, to describe that, what you were feeling in that moment. I needed time. I needed space. I needed to step back. And just like anyone else, when you're hit with an immediate trauma, what might come out of your mouth in those moments might not be filtered. And when you're in pain, it shouldn't have to be. And the whole idea of an affinity space is that no one in that room is expecting it to be. And I can say, "Jeannie is a friend of mine." I can say, "She's a supporter of mine." I can say, "She's a close ally of mine, and she could come and want to support me." In that immediate moment, I would ask that she give me space because I'm not prepared to talk to her right now. And in that same token, I might have immediately-- and I did immediately want to see Dr. Easy. And I think it's-- Jeannie should have understood that. And that's the idea of an affinity group. That's the understanding that we're looking for in supporting it. It's not the idea that it's, "Oh, what are they up to? What are they-- I'm missing-- she shouldn't have felt like she was missing out on anything, right? But she should have been able to understand, and someone who supports would understand. So when the requests coming from our MECO students, our MECO parents, and myself, it's that the district says, "You know what? We understand." The idea behind those spaces is that when you need that, we're telling you, take it. We're telling you, you have it because we understand.
Thank you. Caroline Hahn's the Director of Diversity, Equity, and Belonging. Caroline, do you have some words you'd like to say?
I just want to respond to so much of what I've heard tonight, and I just don't have enough time unless we're going to be here till midnight. So what I do want to read a quote-- I'll defer my time to the late and great James Baldwin, who gave a talk to teachers on October 16, 1963. I think it's relevant here. I've read it maybe to like half of the Admin Council at different points. And it says this. "Any citizen of this country who figures himself"-- and this is James Baldwin's exact words before we became more progressive and woke as a society. "So any citizen of this country who figures himself as responsible, particularly those of you who deal with the minds and hearts of young people, must be prepared to go for broke. You must understand that in the attempt to correct so many generations of bad faith and cruelty, when it is operating not only in the classroom but in society, you will meet the most fantastic, the most brutal, and the most determined resistance." And so this graffiti is just a manifestation, right, of what we've heard from our students, from our MECO director, from our parents of color. And as Director of Diversity, Equity, and Belonging for the District, I just want to make clear that sometimes we conflate-- the MECO program is representing all students of color and just as an acknowledgement that we have a significant and ever-growing population-- communities of color within Wayland. And I want belonging for all students regardless of race, but I do want to make that piece clear. And just to say that when we talk about belonging and as parents and Ms. Rivers and the students did so well, right, that-- I just lost my train of thought. I just lost my train of thought. It's gone. It'll come back as soon as someone starts talking. But anyway, so-- but I did want to give you all time, as I talked to Chris, to ask questions of me, of Ms. Rivers, of-- if you have any. The only question you can't ask is, "What can we do to fix this problem?" That question is awful. I don't have the answer to that. If I did, I wouldn't be here, I bet. I mean, I don't know. I'm on a talk show circuit or something.
I have a question. If you had unlimited budget and unlimited time, what would be your first step in trying to address the systemic racism in our community, in our schools?
So I was a teacher for 28 years, and it's not for that reason that I say this, but I do think that the classroom is the heart of the school in many ways. It's the heart of the district. It's where conversations between kids who are thrown together in a classroom, right, and they're students of all different races, backgrounds, family stories, like all of that. And there they are in this like lab of democracy, if you will. It's one of the few times when students-- like that we have a cross-section of our society in one place for however long, depending on the age level. Because in general, white people-- well, first of all, not in general. In fact, white people are the most racially isolated of any racial group in this country. I can't remember the statistic, but it's over 80%, I believe. Not a single-- like, where a white person doesn't have a single friend of a different race. And I don't know the statistic. I apologize. So our classrooms are the opportunities for those conversations and different perspectives and to learn how to have civil discourse and to really listen to people whose opinions and ideas are different from their own. So if I had a million dollars, I would spend it on professional development and cultural proficiency training, anti-racist training for our staff, not just classroom teachers, librarians, cafeteria, front office staff, school committee members, everyone. Because we show up here-- it's because we love our students, right? We love our children. And we want-- we want them to live in a society that is better than the one we grew up in, right? And the one that we're currently living in. And the only way that can happen is for those conversations to be happening with adults who are committed to anti-racism and have the skills to have those conversations, both planned in a lesson but also unplanned because George Floyd was murdered and they're walking into school the next day. I mean, they weren't during COVID, but-- right? So that's what-- that's what we need. Because it shouldn't just happen in elementary school or in the humanities when they get older. Any teacher, any discipline should feel prepared and committed to engaging students in those conversations.
If I can just add this well to that, because I agree 100%. It has to be in the classrooms. It also has to be embedded in what's natural. If I've learned anything from the conversations that I've had, and it was so interesting and just right on point with my high schoolers, they hit the nail on the head, right? The comments are being made by ignorant students. The job of the school is to educate the ignorant, correct? So why is it that we haven't had classes and courses that deal with educating them on the topics we're talking about? So I get the idea of having the conversations, which we've been having, but we have history courses, K to 12. And yet nowhere in those lessons are they being taught the history that would help teach them the empathy that they need or the understanding for why we are where we are. So one of those things that I think one of my history teachers and a lot of history teachers were famous for saying, right, "If we don't know the history, we're doomed to repeat it." We're constantly repeating it. These instances that we see are constantly repeating it. When I say that these kids are in a desegregation program, they may not be walking into picket signs and lines and all of that that happened for the Little Rock Nine and the rest of them, but that painting on the wall that they came into on the 21st, that's as close to it as they've come. But they've got to deal with it with social media and everything else. That's been happening to MECO students since the program, you know, since we got updated. So one of the things that I would suggest is immediately is that it get incorporated in our current history curriculum, K through 12. Finding a way-- putting in units-- not an anti-racist piece, because for me, I think that's new and that's what people are learning. But actually teaching them the history, I think, starts to build the empathy as well as the understanding that they currently don't have. I think anti-racist works with giving them the language. But I think one of the things-- one of the things that starts with anti-racist work is that you have to first admit that you're racist. And people haven't even started to hear it yet. So I think they have to learn about the history of the country to know that technically, we've all kind of been dealing with that and living in that. So you may not even recognize your race yet or that the country is. So I think having the history to learn about, like we have a desegregation program, we don't have civil rights discussions. Those things can all happen through our history curriculum. So if I had all the money in the world and all the time in the world, I would build a team, a history program review for the district, K-12, and implement a unit. Every grade to have a unit dealing with civil rights movement, desegregation, all of it. Appropriate, age-appropriate, developmentally appropriate, so that every grade touches upon it. Because when the kids walk in the classroom and the teachers are doing it as a part of their normal lesson, the kids receive it differently, they hear it differently. MECO students don't feel like, "Oh, wait, this is a special thing just about me." They're not the blame for it. At the elementary level, when a racist incident happens and kids get pulled for a special assembly, they feel the blame for it. Because they immediately hear about it when the kids learn about it. It's like racist. "Oh, wait, because-- so because you're here, we're learning about this?" So you have white students in classes thinking they're learning about racism because of the black kids sitting beside them. Versus, if we learn about a history class, it's because of the history of our country, and that's what they should be doing.
Can I add that I know that U.S. history and all like slavery, civil war, the civil rights movement, all of those topics are covered at different points based on, you know, the state social studies standards. I think that was-- they're supposed to be-- right. And I do think that they are, from just me going into classrooms and talking to teachers and things. I think, though, students hear it as Dr. King ended slavery. I mean, they really have no idea. They're like, "Dr. King ended slavery. One year, we were doing an affinity group remotely, and we put up a picture of Dr. King, and we asked these third graders, 'Who is that?'" And they were like, "Abraham Lincoln." Right? So there obviously is education that needs to happen, but I think that where the history comes to life for students and where those discourses across difference can happen is when we connect the history of, let's say, the abolition of slavery and this belief that, yay, we abolished slavery. Everything is going to be fine. How the institution of white dominance in this country reared its head and imposed, right, Jim Crow laws? Right? And then Dr. King ended segregation-- or helped to, along with many hundreds of thousands of people whose names are not recorded in the history book. And people are like, "Yes, now we have integration. Now everyone can go to the same restaurants, post offices, et cetera." Right? Do that end racism? No, because we're dealing with a system that is in response. So now we are facing attacks. Teachers are facing attacks and are afraid to teach hard history, right? Because of attacks on like elementary school students are learning-- okay, all of that. But that came in direct response to white people's racial awakening after the death of George Floyd. And so that was another threat, right? And so I think teaching students the patterns of how the system responds and then having kids be able to talk to their experiences or ask each other questions or say, like, "I don't experience that. I've never seen that." For a student to say, "I see it all the time." I think that kids-- whites-- I don't think-- research has shown that white students are more likely to lower or have their racial biases reduced when they develop a meaningful friendship or have a teacher of color who they really respect and like or when a person of color that they know as a member of their community is the target of racism. So it's no longer abstract. It's this person.
Does anybody in the committee have any questions?
I was just going to say, I feel totally ill-equipped to know how to move forward. And so I think as a committee-- and I don't want to speak for the rest of the committee-- but we really need help in figuring out how to move forward within the district, I mean, within the community, you know, through-- I think they're still here-- the HR, DEI. And yeah, that's where I am. Because, you know, I just don't feel like I have the tools personally.
So Jeannie and I had that conversation yesterday. But we had a conversation about that, about how we do not feel like we know what to do. And the ideas that, at least I have had, seem very inadequate. I must say, I was going to say this earlier. I am so angry about this. Just so-- I am so-- I'm sorry, I'm so angry about this. And this whole situation. And I have been waking up night after night, just-- and I don't really know what to do with that. It's not a common part of my life, right? So I agree with Jeannie. I feel completely at a loss of how to address this. And I would welcome any help from pretty much anybody.
I think it's really-- it's-- Chris said it well at the start. It's really hard as a white person to put ourselves in the position that Dr. Easy faced that day, that any of the students of color and parents of color in the district-- to put ourselves in their shoes. I mean, we just don't-- we can't-- I can't even verbalize it, but, you know, you try as you might to put yourself in everyone's shoes. I mean, I can't-- I know it. I know we can't do it because we're white. And so I think we just-- I mean, I go back to, we need help.
I think if I can, with your permission, I'm going to gently push back.
Okay.
Okay?
Yes.
And I apologize because it's not a concession. Let's pretend the camera's not there.
No. And I apologize if I've said something--
I'm not on a school committee. I've never been on a school committee. I'm like, "There's a camera here. Let's pretend it's not there." If-- again, if I may. Using-- because you had some very outspoken, courageous students and parents come forward. So and again, as the director, I'm going to speak for the parent group and the group of students that I represent, right? Because I think there, as we acknowledge, a group that was impacted very heavily by this and aligned themselves with Dr. Easy on this, right? So if we go by the points that they raised, they raised four, okay? Are you able to see the connection between the events before the walls? Are you able to see now what was being raised about the meeting? Remember, not speaking to what your initial impressions were. Because we acknowledge that, you know, your own lens coming into the meeting, your own sort of experiences prior to have nothing to do with what your intentions were going into that meeting, have nothing to do with what you spoke to that day, right? But having seen how things have transpired, having heard the feedback, having seen the whole thing play out, are you able to see connections between the sort of discourse that happened, the treatment, the statements that people felt empowered to make, and what was written on that wall? Do you at all see the correlation between those? Honestly. You may not.
Are you talking about the November 10th?
Mm-hmm. Because again, what people have spoken to is you have a superintendent of color, the first one you've had in this district, who was-- whose job performance was brought to school committee on what essentially was an HR matter. And again, you all were charged with looking at it, and maybe it was the first time you all were charged with looking at it. But still, the fact that, you know, you weren't the ones who brought it. It was brought to you. But looking at everything that we're talking about and everybody's lenses and how that was played out and how, as a district, you've never had a superintendent of color and what that means and how there is an additional level of responsibility when you bring in an administrator of color. You brought in a top level. Your top-level administrator is of color. Like, did you know that there was this level of responsibility that you were taking on by hiring a person of color? Like, it's not just hiring an administrator of color. Like, you literally have to understand, as I think it was someone from HR, DEI, said, everything has a racial aspect to it if it's not all the same race. And in this case, it's not going to be because you now have a superintendent of color in a predominantly white district. So everything that comes forward, you are gonna have to stop and pause and go, wait a minute. Because if you've taken any DEI courses, they're gonna tell you about trigger language. Safety, dealing with a black man, tone, dealing with a black person, white, but, that, those are all like trigger words that someone's gonna tell you about. So you might not have known it before the November 10th meeting. Do you hear that now? That's important.
Can I say, I've heard, like, this is something I've worried for Dr. Easy about since the first day I met him. I wasn't on his hiring committee. And I'll never forget our first meeting, we had this very open, honest conversation, and I don't know if he even wants me to share, and if he doesn't, I'll stop. But I was very concerned about him coming here and what he would face for backlash because he is a strong, well-educated, intelligent man of color. And I've always worried for him in that. And I worried about every action, thought, statement that I've made and kept that lens in view. And now, more than ever, it's like my biggest fear has come to fruition, that he has been personally attacked publicly in a manner that has fractured our community in a way that I can't even imagine.
And if your response to Ms. Rivers' question internally is, I don't know, or no, I don't see the connection, then I just have a follow-up question, which is...
Well, wait, I'm gonna push the time, or teachers, you know, we have to be calm with silence. Give the silence, because I haven't heard a response. And I saw, I saw hands start to go up. Is there a comment? Is there, does anybody have a thought? Like, have you sat with it? Has that been part of what you've been wrestling with?
Yeah, I mean, I can say definitely, yes.
And I mean, but, but see, that's, that's progress. That's growth. You can't expect to know what you haven't experienced. And I, I push back because as a person of color, right, working in a predominantly white district, we constantly have to be prepared for this, right? And with love and respect, I say, it's not enough to say, I'm white, I don't know. It's enough to say, you can say it's not, I did know, right? Because you're learning. But when you invite people of color to your table, be prepared to learn, right? And I feel like you invited, not only did you invite us to the table, because, I mean, I'm, I'm not the superintendent, I wouldn't even be at this table if Chris didn't invite me. So he may be regretting it now, but I was invited to this table tonight, and you know, Dr. Easy has to sit at this table all the time. And so what I'm saying is, we may not always agree, but when you have the racial component, you have to be prepared to take a step back with almost everything and make sure you are removing race from it. Because for people of color, race is always there.
Yes.
We have the conversations with our kids early on about what that looks like. We have the conversations about if you get pulled over, we have the conversations about making sure you're, you know, keeping your hands out in the open, we have the conversations. And what's interesting to me, dealing with Mecho districts, is sometimes that conversation when people talk about how we're preparing our young people and whether or not young people, especially elementary school kids, should be having those conversations. Our elementary school students in some of those conversations I had following the incident, the elementary school students, Mecho students, were telling me they had already experienced being called the N-word at elementary schools. It wasn't from high schoolers. So elementary school resident students know and need to talk about race too, because they're using the N-word and it's not because they saw it on the wall of the high school. So like, again, it, it's okay that we don't know, it's okay that we disagree, it's okay that we make mistakes, as long as we correct them. And I said it before, I'll say it again, Wayland is not, like, right now, you're in the spotlight, you know what? That's because it's sensational, right? You're not the first district to have the N-word written on the wall, you won't be the last. But what you do in this moment, call the attention to yourself for doing something good. This, this day of impact that the Boston parents have called for, make, make that newsworthy. Make that newsworthy because the community stands up and says, you know what, we are, be, be a Mecho community, truly a Mecho community.
Better than that.
Find a way, exactly. Mecho parents aren't abandoning this community, they're standing up and saying, no, you've made us this promise, we're calling you on it. So in that regard, I say, just continue to reflect on it and don't, don't be afraid to recall either. Don't be afraid to come back to the table and say, you know what, we reconsidered, we thought about this, and now with new, just like with anything else, with additional information, this is what we want to do. Because that's the power that you have. There was no rulebook for this when you did it, but you did it. That was an amazing first step. You adopted an anti-racism resolution before many other districts have. You appointed a black superintendent.
Yes.
Support him. And it does require more support than any other superintendent would have, especially in a predominantly white district. And if that writing on the wall shows you that, then like, I don't know who the woman was who first spoke, she threw me off a little bit when she first said it, I'll be grateful that it was there too. If it can make us see that and understand that that's what it was for, then I'll be grateful that it was there as well. But make it serve for something. And as long as we learn from it, then we're fine, because it's gonna continue to happen. Just don't be afraid to lean into it, don't be afraid to learn from it, but don't ever, don't ever use the, you know, I'm white, I don't know. You're white, you can do, no, 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 I don't mean that, I don't mean that. I mean, I don't mean that because we're all comfortable with what we don't know. I mean, don't let it stop you.
Well, I, and I want to make it clear, it's not stopping me.
Awesome.
So, so maybe I miss, maybe I misspoke. Caroline knows. I'm gonna get teary.
Don't get teary. We're gonna get, we're gonna, we're gonna bring in who can help.
I wanna do what we need to do to move forward.
Yeah.
So, that's why I was expressing.
Yes. And that's understa, but you know what that shows, is that you want to, right? You want to. And so if you want to, then, then we've got people that are gonna help. We've got, there are people who are trained to do it. And the thing is, you, that's the thing, that's what we need to do. So we're helped, and you want to learn. So that's the difference, because there are plenty of people who don't, who talk to talk and don't want to do any better, and they're just content to let people think and they put on the airs. You guys are in there and you're ready to do the work, then do the work. And I think what, having the conversation is a great first start. Listening to, to folks who say things that maybe aren't pleasant is also part of that work. That's an amazing, amazing accomplishment that a lot of people will do. So I think in moving that forward, I mean...
We are willing to help you. If we are a team, if we're gonna be a team, let's make be a team. We can't be one, is we gotta be all together on the same page. If I need to learn from us, we need to learn from you, we can do this, we can make it happen, but we gotta be all on the same page. And be willing to do this.
I agree. I just don't want to be misconstrued.
No, 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 no. I didn't think that. I just, again, I'm, I'm saying that, I'm saying that with the understanding that I'm like, okay, I can hear that, but you can do it, is my response, right? Yes, because it, you can do it.
So Caroline had a session for all of us on the school committee before, it started before COVID and it ended online. And it was incredibly powerful, to me at least, and I felt like I could be really vulnerable in there, and Caroline probably remembers some of the things that I said. And, you know, it's made me realize every day, the, just the implicit bias that we all have.
We all have it.
You know, and the implicit bias I have that I might not have thought I had before. And so I guess my point is, I just, I want to learn and I want to be able to move forward as, as a group.
Yeah.
Maya Angelou has a great quote about, I, I forget the first half, but the second half is, but when you do know, know better, do better. And so that's, you want to do better, right?
Stay in the conversation.
Right. I think you made a really good point that I didn't think about in all of this, which is that, I, I'm sorry, I, very sorry.
We're gonna get you a microphone, you know, very soft voice.
Not many people say that. But I, I did underestimate, I underestimated what this would mean for the community. I don't think in terms of racial realities every day, when I'm thinking about things, I don't, I don't bring that lens to it. So I did underestimate what this would be like. And I, I didn't even think of that until you said it, and then I was like, yeah, she's right. I didn't, I didn't really think that this was gonna require a lot more than just hiring whoever else, right?
I think this is gonna, keep going, and then I just remembered what I was gonna say.
And if part of that is what's going on now...
Write it down. Write it down.
Okay. Go ahead. I'm sorry. Yeah, I think, I think it'd be really good to look at that more closely.
Yeah.
And what, what we could have done that we didn't even see was out there.
So what I was gonna say before was that, is just to acknowledge the emotional tax that every speaker, like our students, our families, and every black person who has had to speak to kind of walk white people through this, including the school committee, there is an emotional tax. And that what became clear to me is that when the students were speaking, even though there was a specific name on that wall, they were speaking as if the word was spoken about them. And so when people of color tell you or say to you, as a white, all-white body, this hurts as a blank person, right? That is a, that is a gift to you on the, on the dominant side, because they don't have to, to say, as Susan did, we're on the same team, right? We will help you.
Right.
Which is amazing, I think, that with everything that has transpired, to have that support of our whole community together, to think about that people can put aside their own personal feelings and hurt and say, we're here to help you. When, I don't know, I met with Latoya last week, and she said, there was a bunch of things that stuck in my head, but one of them was, she's like, you don't invite me to your house and hand me a broom and tell me to start sweeping. So white people can't expect black people to clean up their mess with this either. And I'm like, you're right. It just like struck me, and I'm like, that was so right and spot-on. And like, just to, like, to be able to have conversations, I think is such an important thing with anyone and everyone, and to talk and listen and hear one another and not judge or put down or shame or make anyone feel like, oh, this is your issue or my issue. It's all of our issues. Like, I also said to Latoya that day, I can't believe, at that time, it was still 2022, and we're still sitting here talking about this and Mecho still exists. Like, not that I'm not against Mecho, I just, I can't believe we still need it. I can't believe we live in a world where like, it's just not more integrated and everybody's getting what they need, so.
And on that note, I will put in a shameless plug for the Wayland-Meco MLK celebration. You can check the website. It is a shameless plug, but you know what, it's a fundraiser for my Boston Parent Council, and I have no shame when it comes to supporting my own program and my parents or my students. The theme this year is about moving the dream forward. And I think it's very apropos, given the statement that was just made, because we do have Mecho, but what the shame is not, is still having Mecho, is having Mecho be as it was 50 years ago. So I think, just like everything else that Wayland is trying to do and everyone sitting at this table, I hope, is vowing to do, we want to move it forward. So how are we going to move this program forward to be in the best place possible? So that's the idea of the MLK brunch that we're having. So I hope folks will buy tickets, come out here and be a part of it. So that was my shameless plug.
May I offer a resource? I can't believe I won't win my mom again, but...
That's okay.
There's a resource that you can avail yourselves of, and it's Mecho Incorporated. They were just given a half a million dollar grant to provide an anti-racism roadmap to Mecho districts. And if you could be one of the first districts to sign up to be a part of that process, you did something tonight.
I'm writing it down.
Yes.
We, we hear you, and I just want to reiterate that there's just, there's no, there's no place for hateful behavior and we need to do better. And I'm just gonna keep the time concise. Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate it. So, wait, wait, wait.
Are there other comments?
I want to just, I know Caroline, you don't want us to ask you what to do, right? I heard you say that.
No, she said, but I just want to fix it.
How to fix it. But I just want to be sure that, so what I have heard here, I, I like Mabel's idea, I think that's a great idea. I've heard the January 17th idea and ideas of how we could support that would be very welcome. And I just want to be sure that I have not, because I'm a listmaker and a lawyer, whether I've missed something else that was kind of an obvious thing that people were looking to communicate to us in this meeting that I just forgot because I've been, my head's kind of been...
The two other obvious things that I think that were on the list that were foreign to the thing is, to, for the school committee to revisit the investigation piece on Dr. Easy.
Can I interject for a second on that?
Yep.
I think everyone needs to reframe the investigation and how it's being labeled, because it's not investigation into Dr. Easy. And it's been tagged that way by the community, and at least from my standpoint, and I believe from the rest of the committee, and I can speak for you all, it is an investigation into the ongoing, specifically to a meeting, and to figure out what went on. It's not necessarily his behavior, that was how the complaint came to us.
And I think, so, that being said, the question, oh, sorry.
Sorry.
Yep, nope, you, go ahead.
And so, the intention of us involving someone from outside the community to come in and look at what happened during that meeting was to bring in someone neutral, as neutral as we could get, that didn't have any, and I'm sorry for the lack of a better word, but coloring on the situation, and just baseline, figure out what went on, so that we had something to start from and something that was as unbiased as possible to figure out what the real issue is here. So I don't want people to feel like we're just investigating Dr. Easy.
So twofold on that. One is that an investigation was launched looking to this meeting and the behaviors, practices, whatever happened in this meeting, which is a superintendent's meeting, an administrative council meeting, which is led by our superintendent, right? That is his job to do. Our superintendents, all superintendents, hold their administrative council meetings. For any member of his team, that team, to feel like he did something inappropriate in his role as superintendent, and then to have taken that to the school committee or for to have risen to school committee to then say, hey, let's get to, whether, for whatever reason, even if school committee were to have done it, but then to say, we're gonna get an outside investigation to, to look into a meeting that he held, that's a routine part of his job. And no other superintendent in the history of Wayland, as I've been told, has ever had that happen in a routine dealing of his job. It wasn't, it didn't involve, as some member of the community had spoke about, something so egregious that you had to immediately act on and act upon it in that way. So the concern was that, which, this is why we're saying, was there a coloring to it? Was it because this was an African-American, because again, it was the tone, what was questioned about that meeting was his tone and what he had said. So the question then becomes, what we're saying to you all and the fact that you even have that being investigated, have the meeting being investigated, he's a superintendent, he was doing his job, and what was being asked...
And the interest in the investigation is to also protect him from what's going on in those meetings and the complaints that were brought up from that meeting.
But you understand that you're giving validity to anyone being able to call that out, which is what we're saying, is why people can't, which is why teachers then showed up and felt that they could say publicly to a superintendent, a sitting superintendent, as a group of teachers, of teachers leaving because he created a hostile work environment, of teachers are leaving because they, he's not the superintendent.
Those things were all being said before the investigation was even brought up.
But what I'm saying is...
Publicly.
But what we're saying is, the school committee was responsible for putting the investigation piece in place. You all are his supervisors. For, for you all to get involved took it to another level, to launch an investigation at all, for you all to have gotten involved, you all should have left it at that level. Like you said, if, if people come to make open comments, public comment, they can do that. But you all are the school committee.
And unfortunately, it was past a point and it reached a level where personally, I felt a need to protect him from the complaints that were being raised. And the only way to do that was to bring in a And the only way to do that was to bring in a separate outside party to look at it.
Or to have dismissed it outright.
No.
That's the part that seems unreal. Like, why, why would, why would someone underneath him have so much power over something so trivial?
It's not power and it's not trivial.
Wasn't he not sure that he was a person of color? Because it hasn't happened to any, so no other superintendent has, has been called out for something so trivial.
I wasn't sitting on the school committee prior to that.
But I'm just saying, so what I'm saying is, what I'm saying, and let's, so let's take it back because maybe it's something that school committee could look into, because what we're saying is, there were other superintendents. For a superintendent, for, for this to happen and for it to be a superintendent of color who's being allowed to be challenged for something that seems so trivial in a day-to-day interaction, for a superintendent to be called out and out by school committee to the level that school committee has to look into getting an outside investigator, to say that's to protect him, that rises to a level that, no, you all could have protected him on that. You all could have gone back and said, he was doing his job. That, that's the feeling. You're asking the question and I'm telling you, that was the feeling.
No, I'm not asking the question.
Well, no, when you asked, I'm sorry, it came over here, what were the points that were missed? And I'm saying, this is what was asked. Right? That, that was what was asked. And so you responded when I was responding to her question.
Correct.
You responded to say, it's not an investigation into Dr. Easy. And I was explaining to you why we connected those dots. Just so we're clear. That's why I connected those dots. So, so the Dr. Easy piece.
I just want, there was a number four that you didn't get.
Yes, so the PD, the PD piece was the other piece, I think, that you hadn't mentioned. Professional development.
Oh, yeah.
So the professional development for staff. So right now, as it's been heard, when these incidents have happened, staff have been called upon to lead the discussions and the work around the different workshops, if something happens, to discuss racial incidents.
I'm not texting, I'm writing down.
I know. Racial incidents and things like that. So we were asking that, instead of having the staff do that, either train staff who are in place to do that when that happens, or to bring in outside folks who are trained in doing that sort of work to handle those discussions with the kids, as well as just educating students as well. So looking to incorporate some sort of course or curriculum for students that's required dealing with specifically African-American history.
We can't, I'm sorry, we can't have a Q and A right now.
Ellen, one thing I add to, it wasn't in the student comments, but just to make this point, because someone, a, a public comment was about cultural enrichment, and I just want to say in my role, the cultural enrichment is not the same as anti-bias, anti-racist work. So it's, it has its place and it's very important multicultural education and all of that, but that is really different from dismantling policies, practices, and systems that perpetuate racial inequities in our school district. So that cultural enrichment, to me, is, is like this part of the pie of what our work is.
Good, but not enough.
So Caroline, are you referring to the, the shows that go on from elementary to middle that are put up by the cultural enrichment?
I'm referring to, like, you know, someone was mentioning the multi, different kinds of festivals that have taken place, where different people from different countries, like, bringing, and I'm not, there's nothing wrong, it's a wonderful, beautiful thing. I'm not dissing that at all. I'm just, I want to make a point of distinction that that is not the same as an anti-racist, uh, anti-racist action.
Yeah. No, I was asking because I was on the cultural enrichment committee. And when I joined, I thought it was culture and then realized it was arts and shows and I got a little, I was a little bit, so I was a little, I was like, oh, this is what we have.
All right. Thank you so much. We really appreciate this. Appreciate you taking the time. And Caroline, we appreciate it very much. And I'm sure, you know, we'll be in touch. Thank you.
Okay. You're welcome.
So maybe there, just for the committee to have a little bit of a heads up, there are a few sections of the agenda that we won't be covering tonight. So if you are, you know, worried about our timing anyway, there's some sections that we won't be covering, so just wanted to give you guys a heads up. So I would suggest that perhaps we move on to the superintendent update at this point, unless there's anything else that committee members would like to say.
My only question is how to move it forward and continue the conversation with, I don't know where she went, Latoya and Caroline.
How to move forward and continue the, yeah, I'm only repeating because people probably can't hear me. So, yeah. The only question was how to move forward and continue the conversation.
That's why I wanted to make the list, because I'd like to put it on a future agenda.
Sure.
Chris, I didn't mean to interrupt you.
Yeah.
But I'd like to put these four items that are on the list on a future agenda, maybe one at a time to talk about them and try to do something, like I'm a, I'm a doer. Do something.
Yeah, I also was sort of thinking as well, that's a, I like that idea. The other thing I was thinking is, perhaps we designate someone or two people from the committee who would be sort of the connector between the various groups, such as someone from the school community could be a communicator and connector with Latoya and Caroline.
I'll volunteer.
And HR, DEIC, and others, so that, and then come back to the committee to provide updates and then, you know, kind of use that as a way to forward the conversation, because as we all know, since the five of us can only talk in meetings like this, sometimes things take longer, and I think this is something where we should delegate. So is any?
I will volunteer.
Anybody else interested?
I would like to.
Just okay?
But if somebody else wants to, I understand too.
So maybe we have two people, Jess and Ellen, you want to work on that together?
Sure.
Okay.
Unless you need.
I, I brought Karen.
Okay. So are we all set?
I know, I am happy to do it, but it's fine. I just think it's important that if we do delegate it, that it does come back to like. We could have it, but. You know, the agenda items like Ellen was saying.
Right.
It needs to come back regularly.
Yeah, absolutely. Okay. Anything else or should we move on to Dr. Easy's update? Dr. Easy.
Thank you. So before I apologize, I lost my voice and I'm fighting a cold and the timing couldn't have been better for me to be able to speak here. But I, I've been sitting and listening and I've been to process a whole lot that has gone on in the past couple of weeks. And I'm still processing. But, you know, I, I heard our students and I, I thank you and I appreciate you. But I, I heard one of them say that they're tired, they're tired of this, and I feel the same way. It's, it's tiring and it's asking a whole lot of us and, and still we have to move forward and march on. You know, this committee hired me as superintendent here and I remember being hired and one of my, what was my biggest fear or concern was leaving one of these very meetings and being pulled over by a police officer in waiting. And I played that out in my head. Chief, no offense.
We got you, we got you, easy. I can have us in town.
Right. And, and I, and I've played it out over and over in my head and always hope that I never get pulled over, going home at 12 or nine and leave a long meetings. But suddenly, that really isn't the biggest fear. Because that graffiti on that wall illustrate to us that there is closer danger than just being pulled over by a police officer. And I know, I could say it a whole lot. I, as a superintendent, I, I sit and listen to a lot of comments directed at me and I think it's, it's some, it's part of the course in some cases, but I think one of the most hurtful ones, or one was the public comment that I, I think that I heard from our teachers, our teachers and our WTA leadership last evening. I think that hurts me the most because as a senior member of this district, I value teachers and teachers so much as the mother of our profession. And it bothered me because I felt like the WTA took a stand to defend what I deemed and still believe as inappropriate behavior from any of them. And I thought that was harmful to our kids and I felt helpless in doing something about that. I did take pride in the fact that my leadership drove that teacher out of this district. I wear that with pride because that was what's best for our kids. So I never and will, I never will view one or this particular issue as the defining thing, defining moment, the pinnacle of our community, because I, I see and felt so much support from this community through personal messages and our part of support from families that I've received in the past two weeks that is so overwhelming and truly I'm grateful. So I, I mean, I'm not a stranger to being a public figure, either as an educational leader here or my, my previous life that I hate to talk about so much as a professional athlete. You know, I've, I've, I've performed in front of hundreds of thousands of people, screaming my name or the name that they gave me for that day. But I've learned to, to process things differently and I've learned to process these type of incidents. But it's difficult to make sense of all of it. Having to talk to my family as reporters recall my house and I actually speak to my wife and the kids would be in a room and hearing some of these conversations. And they're not calling to speak about daddy's accomplishments or achievements as a superintendent. They're calling needing to speak to, to us about simply something that shouldn't be talked about. It's about my skin color and what it represents for some people. This public display of racism and bigotry, it's really sad, it hurts me, my family, but for all of our students and their family, I feel deep and I, I feel so hurt that I But this graffiti on the wall or a building, honestly, it pales in comparison to those who have been complicit in feeding this narrative, the microaggressions, the undermining, and the most not-so-subtle endorsement of bigotry. So my concern today and going forward is for all of our students who haven't yet lived a lifetime of experiences that takes time for them to process and compartmentalize the kind of hate that we saw a couple of weeks ago. Race is not simple. It's not a simple issue. So I won't try and oversimplify this for anyone. But what I don't want is for our black and brown members of our community to think that that graffiti spoke for everyone in this community. It only represents one person or persons who wrote it. Additionally, what I want to say is, for every person out there who agrees with that message of hate on the side of that building, there are at least a hundred more people that feel the opposite of that hate, who really cares about our students of color, our white students, our students in special need, all of our students. I watch and I witness folks showing up in freezing cold, supporting and honking their horns as, as the day went by and just standing, standing for love and support. And I can speak on that because in my year and a half in this district, I've come to understand this community, our parents, our students, our teachers, our staff, and realize that there's some folks here that really make within the district it is. And that's something that we should cherish. I'm here to do a job that you're tasked with, the school committee, and yes, it has become increasingly difficult, but I'm here to provide equity and access for all students and give them a chance to see and experience a bright future. I'm also here to make sure that every school in our district is physically, socially, and emotionally safe for everyone. And I am not wavering from that. I'm not moving from that. And if, if that's too much for this community as a superintendent, then, then I'm not the superintendent. But as long as I'm here, I can echo the words of Eleanor Roosevelt as she says, no one can diminish you without your consent. And I'm not giving that. So I thank you for your support and I appreciate it. It's half, it's a quarter, it's a fraction of what I want to say. But I'm hurting for our kids and I'm hurting for my kid and my family. And it's unfortunate that we have this junction, but together we can move forward. I struggle when I hear statements that this is not our community. Because I don't know if it's not, then I'm in somewhere else because this is Wayland and this happened in Wayland and I'm the superintendent of Wayland Public Schools. So this is our community, but we can make it better. And the first step is to admit that this is our community and we can move forward by at least accepting that this is our community. I also struggle when folks say we need to heal. But I, I can't, I can't remember healing, healing happening unless there is actually a wound or a cut. And we, we have to really understand what just happened, what has been happening. I mean, I have been facing this subtle, not so subtle attack since August 21st of 2021 as a superintendent of Wayland Public Schools. It's not foreign, but it has gotten more and more emboldened in folks, just people have decided that this is how we are going to treat the superintendent. I think Wayland Public Schools, as a district, as a town, has to decide how and what the superintendent means to the district. I can heard the back and forth conversation a bit about this complaint and this investigation, and this is nothing for us to decide right now, but the school committee made a choice. They made a choice to. They made a choice to choose between a member of admin council or this superintendent. And that's why we're here right now. So no one is to be blamed, but we are responsible. And I'm here. I won't waver from my moral and professional responsibility to hold people accountable. No one should feel unsafe in any building in Whalen Public Schools. People have been feeling unsafe in our schools. And I speak against that and I stand against it. And if it's not here, wherever I go from here, at any point, 10, 15 years from now, tomorrow, the next day, next month, I will not waver from that. No one should be unsafe in any school environment. And if that's, if that's the way it goes for me as I express my conviction around that, then so be it. But schools are schools are really the last democratic place that we have in this country where everyone has a right to free education and access to do the things that are better, that will make them better. And as educators, as we are educators in this room, it's our job, it's our duty to make sure that gets done. And I, I see my members of the admin council here and I appreciate you guys from the bottom of my heart. And honestly, you were one of the reasons why I said yes to Whalen, when I experienced on those who moved. So thank you. Yes. So Principal Gavin, can you come up and present our performance? Sorry. All right, so Principal Gavin is here to present the seventh and eighth grade, the Great East musical festival.
Yes, Beth. Yes, how was that? Musical interlude, as it were. Really hard to go after all the music. Stay on track here. So prior to COVID, we have for, for many, many years, as some of you know, our, our music programs bring, bring the seventh and eighth grade bands, of course, orchestra to the Great East Festival, which is a musical competition. It is a space in which our kids really come and prepare, you know, different pieces. I go to it every year, it's great. They, and, and there's so many kids that attend. I mean, our groups are so much bigger than the, the other groups that are there typically. But they, they play, they play or they sing before a number of evaluators who are sort of experts in their field and are able to do a couple of things. One is to really rate the music and they, as they're playing, they're, they, they kind of orate like all the different points that are recorded and then played back for the kids and then they have a massive class with these experts. They're often, you know, at the college level or people who work in symphonies and things like that. So it's, it's really an incredible opportunity for our musicians to be, to sort of have this opportunity to perform. They then, they, they often get, they get prizes too, you know, they often get gold medals and, and things like this. And then there's a celebration afterwards where they go to an amusement park as well, to Canby Lake Park. So the reason we come before you is because it is a trip out of state. The location is yet to be determined. It's one of the New Hampshire high schools. It's, it's, it moves from year to year, which is why you don't have an exact space. It happens since June, June 9th, if I remember correctly. So I'm hoping that we will again be able to have this opportunity to go. It's really the culmination for the kids too of all their, their, their efforts.
Okay, so looking for approval for this trip?
I move that we approve this seventh and eighth grade performing song. Before we second it, can I just ask, can I vote on this? Like I don't have a music, a child who does music.
There's no issue.
Seventh grade, okay, no issues attached. All right, just wanted to make sure before I, I'll second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? No one's opposed, everyone's in favor, motion passes.
Thank you, our, our. Great presentation. But yeah, I'm sorry, it's really short. I should play you the, the music that they play. I mean, it is, it is really incredible. Still timed, I'm sorry. But thank you for approving it.
We appreciate it.
Thank you. Still have to do what you need to do.
Right.
Yeah. We have to.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry. Item 4.2.
Yes.
This should be in your folders. It's the Accept Collaborative that we're looking to partner with them, which will allow us to have students from our district in the event need to go to the Accept Collaborative School. It's a $4,000 for the membership. I had to submit a statement of interest on the 31st to now and approve the official vote and acceptance from the committee.
This is, it's similar to tech.
Yes. Similar to tech, it's in native, so it's closer, obviously, to tech. I also like the committee to vote to appoint a member of the school committee to accompany myself and Dr. Cattellbell to the meetings, similar to what Jeannie does for the tech.
So we only get one vote though, I noticed reading. And it's, it's your vote.
Right.
So if it's like tech, which is some people bring both people, if it's like tech, even if you don't go, the school committee member can't vote for it. Yeah, I read, I read that in fact, just so everybody knows. So can I do one piece of history?
Please.
Because I did when we, when I saw that we were doing this. So this was something that Paul Stein and Brad Crozier and Marlene Dotick, all former superintendent, assistant superintendent, and special ed director, looked at doing right before Paul left. And they just, they didn't do it because they thought that it would, he was leaving, there wouldn't be consistency with. I don't know if it's been discussed since then. Certainly hasn't been brought up to us. So anyway, that's the one historical piece I have.
Okay. Dr. Can I just provide like a brief, sort of subtle, I know it's like tech, but can you just provide us sort of a brief summary? I know, you know, you had sent a letter, you sent a letter, right, to a buy?
Right, right.
That I think.
So it's an application process.
Described some of it to me.
Right.
But I think for the rest of the community, you can provide a brief summary.
So it's an application process. It's actually chaired by one of my colleagues, a superintendent out of Huddleston. And several of our Metro West districts are in the Accept Collaborative. So if we send a student there, it's a significant discount to us. Right now, if we have a student go there for our district, we pay a lot more because you're not a member in the community. So we see a lot of benefit in, in this as we are working to try to bring more students back from the private special ed students schools to more like tech and/or Accept Collaborative schools. It, it's an amazing access point for us because it's literally right next door. And if you have specific questions about the program, then I could either have BJ come over and help me describe or not. If you have any more questions.
What's the difference, just out of curiosity, between the Accept School and like the Tech school?
BJ, you go. I saw your book. It's not that there's a lot of difference, but because the concept of a collaborative kind of arrangements is the same, they offer different programs. The one thing that I will tell you I think is critically critical and how I think about our students who can't stay in their home schools, the transportation period, you know, Tech used to be right by Dana Hall.
Yeah.
Once upon a time.
Now it's in Wal-Mart.
Which was literally 12 minutes away from Whalen, at least at 6:30 in the morning when I'm driving it. But now when I leave here and I have to go to the tech office, it's 45 minutes each way sometimes. And think about our children who are five, six, or seven, having to sit in a car that long. And we want to invite our children back into the community in the afternoon. They miss a huge portion because they're in a juhar, whereas being in a separate transportation time period would be significantly less. That's one of the things I like about it. The other piece is they have different programs. So being a member gives us reduced rates, it gives us greater variety. And I'm a huge proponent of working with collaboratives. I really am. I find that as our first job because all the superintendents are working together to build these programs and increase the passing.
Okay. No, I, I can't. No, we can't close it, we just have to ask.
Just one of them maybe.
But that's, that's where I see the difference.
Okay. Thank you.
And similarities, I should say. But I think it's really, you know, we looked and thought about this walking hard and made a lot of calls and did a lot of investigating and to take this lightly because I'm looking for more diversity of programs for our students when we need to provide them with other options.
Yeah. Okay.
Agreed. So the, the vote you're looking for is for a school committee member to represent the district.
Yes, and to codify and confirm that we should enter into.
Okay. All right, would somebody mind putting together a motion?
I move that we.
Oh, do we, are you raising your hand for an emotion?
I was raising it purple.
For the volunteer to be a.
You know, I'm just in a volunteering mood.
So your motion with you is the volunteer then?
Okay, I move that I volunteer to be the school committee representative for Accept Education Collaborative.
And that we move forward.
And that we move forward to.
With the process, yeah.
With the process of the application. I second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, no one's opposed, motion passes.
All right, item number three is the memo sent to each of you regarding a full day kindergarten program. As a follow-up to, to this memo previously we talked about, asked from the town with regards to cuts that they're looking for the school department to make. And the memo outlined to you before, the town is asking us to take $731,000 off of our budget. We genuinely and realistically don't see how we can make those necessarily cuts. However, full day K was a part of our budget, which was the amount of approximately $460,000. So reducing full day K or taking it out of our budget, knowing that this is such a big part of what we want to do for a district for several different reasons. Not only equity and to maintain and prevent further loss learning. I have put together with Tom and I worked through putting a proposal as to how we can fund full day K without it being an impact to our budget. So this presentation is kind of support the memo that I presented to you for approval to move forward and asking, making requests from our town for opera funds. Okay, so this is just the background and an opera, opera money that we currently have. This was voted into law and signed by the president in March of 2021. So while the state, local state, and federal government has put together the guidelines around how to spend this money, there are several rules that has been put in place. First rule, rule one, is where full day K qualifies to be funded under Harper because the guidelines around how you can spend this money. I think the notion is that this opera fund is deemed or earmarked for water, sewer, and so on. But there are portions of it that could be used, that could be used to mitigate certain things that have happened over the pandemic. And in rule one, it speaks specifically around early learning services and services to address learning loss. So the town received $4.1 million. Today, they have allocated and spent 1.7, currently remaining is 3.4 of that 4.1. So we are one of 30 communities right now that doesn't have full day K for a community. The list below here is most of our Metro West schools who are currently providing free full day K for their communities. And this is a little more information on what has happened and what has transpired since 2000. As you can see, the most powerful point here, bullet point here, is the last bullet point where since 2000, 29% of communities had full day K to now, which is about 92%. So we are, we are in the small minority of districts that currently do not have full day K for our students. So I've broken down what we have been doing for a full day K over the years. Obviously, these dates predates me, but in 2017 to 18, as you can see, the graph illustrates full tuition being paid and no cost for half-day tuition. So in this year, in question, we had 22 students who did not experience or benefit from full day K because they only went to the half-day program. So in the same following year, 17 to 18, this is our survey that shows the primary language that's been spoken in our community. As you can see, Korean at that time was the highest spoken language, it's not English. In 2018, the number of students who did not attend full day K is roughly the same, but the number of paid went down from 191 to 155. In that year, the primary language spoken is not English, was Russian, Russian. In 2019 to 20, the number of students that we did not accept, enter full day K was 23, so it went up. And the number of fully paid was, is 181. That's also a smaller number than previous years. In that particular year, you can see Chinese and Russia is now two of our highest spoken languages, if not English, in the community. In 2020 to 21, full day K, obviously more of the family are paying for it. Still have a 6% that has, has not paid for full day K. So we have 14 or so students who did not attend a full day kindergarten. In that same year, notice the graph of languages changes and difference for that year. So we're now obviously seeing that we're now having to service more students, what more we need in terms of EL in our community.
Can I just ask a question, Dr. Z? These language charts, these are students that do not speak English. So this is their only, this is their only language, not their first language, but their only language.
Right. This graph is really important and interesting as we move forward. There are similar years from 2017, and a DIBOR score, which is given in the fall. You see in 2017, 59% of our students are below benchmark. Following year, 51. Following year, 42%. However, in this year, 2019 to 20, was when they was kind of changed the criteria and then lowered the bar. So we found ourselves to be at 42%. If it wasn't previous years, it would have been probably higher than 59 or 51. And we never, we didn't give the diagnostic evaluation during the fall because the COVID years, we did it in the, in the winter, as you say, in January. So 45% of our students were still performing below benchmark. So now, we fast forward to the school year 22, 23, and we have 51% of our students.
And that's from this past fall?
Right.
Yeah.
Uh, below benchmark going to kindergarten. So I'm using this graph just to really kind of illustrate to you that we need to intervene earlier.
Yeah, 51% is high.
Right. And that's, we, we shouldn't be experiencing that, but we are. And, you know, with the, the fully integrated preschool and needing to put full day K in place, we have to get after these, these, these young people earlier. Because obviously by the time they get to grade two, where more things are starting to manifest themselves, we find ourselves needing to put more funds into mitigating the issues that may exist as opposed to getting after it in full day K.
So you might not know the answer to my question. It says, um, it looks like these scores are from the fall. So was it like once the school year started or was it fall like later in the fall?
So fall like October.
Okay.
Except for 21, 22, we didn't do it because of COVID.
COVID was done in.
Traditionally, it's coming into the system, like in two months of entering the system. Yeah.
Okay.
But that won't be the case for, because now we'll have TCW.
Right, TCW, like, starting early. And here, here is my proposal, our proposal to how we can fully fund full day K. With this one-time ARPA funds, the state is afford us right now. I'm proposing that we will request the full amount for the FY20 school year, approximately $460,000. In year two, we'll ask for them to surplan half of that while we should add 230, which is half of that fund into our operating for the second year. And by the third year, we should fully incorporate full day K. So it's a three-year process, which I think is the best way to do this, without taking the big hit in our budget, the first year, the second year. If you remember, the first memo I sent to you was a five-year plan.
Yeah.
I really think that's too long. I think we need to move at this.
The first memo was a five-year plan without ARPA funds.
Right.
Yeah, was just doing it ourselves.
More, more aggressive. And I think just the opportunity that we have this fund, is a one-time fund, we're not going to get this money again, hopefully no more pandemic. But if we ask for the town to fund full day K, I think this will be our best way of doing this. And I think, um, just to be really very clear, right, we are not, the school department is not asking for funds from the ARPA appropriation for, to create a slush fund. We are open, honest, and direct in what we want for. This is exactly what we need for. It's a benefit to our town as a whole because we shouldn't be one of the 30 districts that don't provide full day K.
So what does the town say?
So what I'm, what I'm asking for now is that the committee vote to request this timeline and this fund from the town. Who now has a subcommittee for Harper, which I think is two members from the board of, select board.
So, so I think it's fair. We should give the history, right, of the, for, for the town, right? Do you want to do that or do you want?
I don't think I know the history.
Well, I, well, I don't either, but I know as much as you and I talked about. But there's the subcommittee, right, from the Board of Selectmen. The Board of Selectmen oversees the ARPA funds. And they solicited requests for ARPA funds a while ago. And they, they spent the first chunk back a while ago, the $1.7 million, and then there's this remaining. And on December 5th, they voted on what, where, all the requests that came in, which obviously full day kindergarten wasn't in there yet. And they voted how the funds are going to be distributed. So I think to do this, what Dr. is asking, we're asking the subcommittee to reconsider and the Board of Selectmen to reconsider.
Yeah, I mean, in conversations that Tom and I have been having with the acting town manager and director of finance, we have talked this through. And there are proposals made for the 3.4. Nothing has been actually put in place. There's a timeline as to when this money has to be spent. And some of the proposals that we put forward would take a longer period of time to get done. This, this actually allows us to use these funds appropriately and exponentially and meet the timeline.
We have received a positive response from the town?
Well, in our conversation, it was positive, though we had heard. We committed, we felt it was very positive. And in fact, I would go on a limb to say that they agree that this is a way of getting full day K into our system. I think.
I think it's kind of cloaked.
I do think it's important and so appropriate because I think of all these little kids who've been kind of isolated, like the timing couldn't be better, right? Like, this was needed a million years ago, but right now, we have these little kids who've been isolated and may not have been in preschool or daycare as like a lot of the other kids. And haven't even had like that socialization outside of their homes. So I, I think that these funds are very clearly in line with what we're looking to do.
But I mean, so the key thing too, and, and I know it could be seen as, I know it could be seen as if the school is asking for money constantly.
But we need it.
I had my, I had my thoughts about that. Our schools are really good. Our teachers are excellent. And because of those things, our taxes and our value of our homes are at the level which it is. But rule one, in American Recovery Plan Act specifically speaks about early learning services. And it talks about lost learning. We are starting to experience that right now. Like this is like the first year, we're seeing some of the SMDs and some of the dyslexia, dysgraphia issues that our kids are having because of these wonderful things that we've worn in the past two years. So we need to get after this from the pre-K and, and K level up into second grade. And not have full day K, as you see the numbers that we're showing. We can't have kids going into kindergarten 51% below benchmark. That is just not acceptable.
I really like this. And I like that they don't want to spend the ARPA money. Good thing they put it right in the budget.
Right, wait, one, wait, right.
An alternative, right?
So I, I just, I feel like it, it is great that we are having this conversation about full day kindergarten, you know, without tuition. And I, and I, I want to thank you guys because I know like the first conversation was sort of, we're going to do it, we're going to do it all this year. And then you came back with a creative solution about phasing it in over three years, which I think is, is really, really helpful. The only thing I, I'm kind of thinking about is for the ARPA funds, I was under the impression that it was for capital use. And I, it seems like this would be more of an operational use. So did you talk through that with the town?
Well, no, it's, I don't, it was never really for capital use because that's kind of why the state comes up with these guidelines and rules.
Yeah.
And all of the, the things you can use them for has to fall in those criteria.
Okay.
And this first criteria, right.
That's what that is, the states.
This response to negative impact, we call it the capital emergency, is the guideline which falls on the early charge.
I think perhaps the town's view is that they want to spend it on capital.
And it's not.
Like if you read, if you read their memo from December 5th where they presented it, they wanted, they, they selected the projects based on capital.
Right, because then next year, if it's operational, you need to find the money in the future.
Yes.
Okay.
So I think it's a great idea too, and it's a very creative way to fund this. The question is logistically, how we go back and ask for it. Because, because it's the Board of Selectmen who oversee the ARPA funds, right? It's not, I don't, the town manager isn't really involved in that as much as.
I suppose it should be, correct.
But, no, that's not what I was going to say. I was going to say in, in Wayland, for, you know, the Board of Selectmen are the ones who are overseeing how the ARPA funds go.
Which two board, which two members of the Board of Selectmen are on the committee?
Tom Fay and Carol.
And Carol. So let me just, let me just say, in the, all the towns that are Metro West towns, there is a member from the school department on the subcommittee of the ARPA appropriation fund. Whether it's a member of the school committee or a member from my administration. Obviously, we, everyone is different. We don't have that. I think because the voice of what the schools may be looking for should be heard. And I don't think that's actually been, you know, front and center. So how do we go back? I think, well, what I would like to see is for the committee to make a motion, vote to send a memo to the committee to reconvene and look at the proposal. And hopefully accept the proposal. But first, we could kind of initiate a memo to them to reconvene that subcommittee.
So did I hear correctly that, I'm sorry, Jeanie, but did I hear correctly that we've already received requests from the town of how to cut our budget before we even got around to talking about our budget? Did I hear that correctly?
Well.
You, you did, but we, I think we'll talk about that next.
That's the, that's the town manager.
But it's connected, it's connected up.
You're correct. It is connected.
Because typically that comes in a finance committee, the school committee.
But that's not happening.
Right. So can someone explain to me what the logistics of that, since we're talking logistics?
It's connected because we had full day K in our budget and being asked to reduce it by $731,000. The first and most logical cut would be full day K.
Cause it's a big one.
Right. So taking that from there and now looking to figure out how we get another 200 and something thousand dollars.
Yeah, but I really applaud you because we have had this conversation literally every single year. I've been on the school committee and every single year we've decided not to do this.
Which is why when you put the five-year plan together, that was a great first step. Because it was, as Tom said to me one day, we're just going to keep kicking it down every year if we don't have a plan.
This is honestly, I don't want to put in pressure, but this is the year to do it because this money is a one-time appropriation. And we hope to never have another pandemic, that we have relief funds. But if we have this money and there is a timeline on this spending this money, so all these capital proposal may not fit that timeline. But this will because of the timing of appropriating that money. I think we just spend some money by December 26.
It has to be obligated by the end of December 2024 and spent by December 31, 2026. So we have another.
You have to like put it in place.
Two years to have it.
All spent out.
Right, and then spent by.
So capital improvement may not get done in the time.
So I have a question.
Just saying.
Does the number that you have allocated for next year and then the half number, or for, for next school year? And then the number for the next school year as the half? Does that cover any sort of anticipated influx of enrollment in kindergarten? Like if we were to need to add an extra like FTE or something, like should we budget for a little bit more in what we're asking for from our?
No, that's a really good question. We've seen our kindergarten.
It dropped.
Drop, drop in the past two years, last year and this year. I don't really know why that is at this point. And we'll continue to see what's happening. But I probably would go on a limb and say, if we reinstate full day kindergarten, that number might go back up. Right, because maybe folks are thinking, if I'm paying for it at a private school, if this school is ready to stay there.
Right.
But if we're now doing that and the kids, the students will be in our system from that early age all the way through, it's just a better result.
So should we?
We could anticipate having more FTEs, but I think that's something that we, we can project. The only way we can project it that way is from these various different developments that are coming around. Right now, we're getting some from the Blue 20. That would be the projection of, and that would be across all grades, really.
Right.
So.
Okay. I guess, is this number based on like classrooms, heads?
It's actually the revenue.
Okay. So you're taking our current revenue and kind of like.
Staff is in place.
Project.
They're there.
Got it. Okay.
Teachers, the parents, everybody's there. But that is, is the actual fees we're charging parents.
Okay.
So it assumes the program would be the same next year.
Right.
Right. Different funding source.
Right.
Okay.
So we try to really offset the revenue that we're losing.
So you might end up with too much money.
Yes.
Potentially.
You know, I sat with FinCon last night. Our special education numbers are skyrocketing because clearly we, we raised that banner last night. And there's a big concern about that. Part of what this addresses is early, earlier intervention. I know it doesn't seem that way because the numbers are so large, but this is an investment over a long term. But those 22 or 21 or whatever the number was of the kids that are still in half-day kindergarten, and maybe because of financial implications with the parents, we can address earlier. It may be kids that when they get to second grade, we're not sending out to the Carroll School or accept or, or the other collaboratives.
To that point, do we have data that tells us why those 21 or 22 students did not do full day?
We don't have data pointing why they did. That's probably something we're going to set out this year when we get our enrollment going, just start gathering that data. But hopefully we don't have to, if we have full day K.
Do we save a bus? We used to save a bus.
Oh, yeah?
If we, if everybody has to go to full day K.
Yeah, because there's.
Oh, does it take somebody?
See, I'm.
I think we do. I think we.
I'm imagining a memo with all these points.
Yeah.
I've already started writing it in my head.
Save the bus for the day.
When they go on the regular round.
Yeah.
They go, they go the first.
They wouldn't have the half-day. They wouldn't have the half-day.
Oh, but yes, you should definitely do this.
It's one, do we have one bus?
Do we really save a bus though? It's just a bus we have that's doing a midday.
No, we don't do the midday bus. There's a bus that runs around and picks them all up and takes them home in the middle of the day.
Okay.
So when you do that bus route, so it's one less loop for the bus.
Right.
That's, that's beneficial.
So I think this is a really good idea to pursue. I don't know how it will end up, but I think we should.
That's not your.
That's not for you, Jeanie.
I'm, I'm getting it.
I think we need clarity too on how we're going to pursue it because it seems like it's not so much necessarily at the town level. It's more at this, this Board of Selectmen has a, I don't want to, they have maybe a working group or.
Yeah, or a subcommittee or something. Yeah.
So is this, if, if we're.
Someone should talk to the subcommittee.
If we're going to make a decision to. If we're going to make a decision to have the school district move forward the conversations, maybe we want to sort of address that matter. Do you, do you move forward with the town?
It's technically a subcommittee because I look at the.
A subcommittee. So, I think what I really want from the committee is to make a motion and decide to address the subcommittee in opening the conversation and present this time.
I think, I think that's a good, I think logistically, I would not only, I would write a memo, but then I would go talk to them. I wouldn't just send them a memo.
Yeah.
I would go, and maybe it would be good to have someone from the school committee there too if it's Board of Selectmen people.
Yeah.
Shall I nominate Jeannie?
I was just going to do the same thing.
I was just going to say, is the finance subcommittee meeting anytime soon? Perhaps this is something.
Well, we could. We have no schedule.
Perhaps you add it to your agenda as.
Yes, because of all the meeting, all the January meetings, right? I, I am comfortable making, if everybody's ready, I'm comfortable making a motion to approve pursuing this funding for full-day kindergarten via a memo and a conversation with the subcommittee of the Board of Selectmen.
I'll second.
Yeah, that's a great. Did you get that, Diane?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? No one's opposed, motion passes.
Okay, so are we doing this in the finance subcommittee or how do I?
I think if the timing makes sense.
Timing is of the essence.
Right, it does. It's actually, we need to get it done this January because they need to decide by the end of January where the rest of that money goes.
I think Jeannie should just do it because, do it with the administration. And if you run into a place where you think you need to talk to the subcommittee, you can call me up and we can talk to the subcommittee. But I don't, we have so many meetings.
It's fine with me if you guys are comfortable with it.
I'm, I think that's, that's fine.
So, when you tell me, what do you, tell me what you want to do? What, me, you and town to approach the subcommittee?
We'll write a memo and then we'll send it and talk to them.
Right, because we want to recon, have them reconvene to accept the proposal and discuss.
And also, I want to know their answer because if their answer is no.
Then, back in the budget.
Or at least I'm going to suggest.
As opposed to the five-year plan.
Yes.
Okay.
We need it.
Are we?
I'm good, yes. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Okay, so administrative matters. The first item, I'm going to skip over because I don't have any new information on this. The second item, superintendent goals. Are we prepared to do that or are we skipping over that also?
I think we should skip over that.
Okay.
I think that Jess and I are going to sit down on Monday because I just will have a meeting so that we can vote on the goals on Monday night.
Okay, great. Terrific. All right. So, then we are at financial management discussion regarding fiscal year '24 budget. And, um, okay. I see the presentation in here. Are we?
Which one are we?
That's from the last.
Last one, right.
Well, I think on tonight's schedule with central office, facilities and food services.
So, we're hoping that based on the book that you have with you, but, and the questions that we've received so far, we can go through those questions or we can go over the overview of where we are with the conversation with the town manager.
Okay.
Which I think is important at this point because as the town manager act is in place, we're having more conversations around the budget.
Okay.
And I'm really trying to hold back some of those decisions because you as a body has to decide on the budget.
Right.
And they're asking for those cuts in the number of, you know, seven, 732 or 731. We don't have, none of our ask that the principals presented, that I presented in the budget this year is in our budget right now. It's all level service. None of the asks are there. So, to cut $731,000 from our budget without even putting any ask in it, I think it's a, it's a big ask. Tom and I went to.
When is in $731,000? And who, who, who suggested we cut it and what's in it?
I think you got a memo on that. You sent us a note.
I sent the note, yes.
You sent a note.
Yeah.
Is it in email or in the?
Email.
It's in email.
Was that in the FY '24 budget concerns? Is that the number one?
Yeah, I think that's the email. Dr. Easy sent the email.
What, what date is that?
I think it's December 23rd.
It was December, yeah.
Oh, it's right here.
After one of my meetings with the town.
I think December 23rd, budget concerns.
So, in that 731, the first thing is the full day K and full day K was the big concern there. The bit of school right now is experiencing potentially a 2.0 increase in FTE based on enrollment. We talked about the big, big grade class coming up to the sixth grade level that would, that would require extra sections. We're meeting with the administration tomorrow per building to go back through the budget line to see where we are before we have more conversations around what needs to be, or what could be taken from the budget.
So, to summarize why we need to cut, and please like those of you filling in. For reading your memo, the reason that the town needs to cut is because we're close to the levy limit. And if we keep the budget as it is between us and the town, the original budgets, it will put us over the limit and we will need an override. So, that's why they've asked, that's why there's cuts. Right?
Right. Because I think, so, yes, right now, I don't believe that we, the town, plan to go for an override this fiscal year, perhaps next year. So, I think we need to try to stay.
So, we have to stay within the levy. And we also can't forget that we have negotiations that at some point, there's going to be an adjustment to this upwards.
Great.
There's a reserved budget unallocated on the town side.
Right, yeah.
Right, so is that included in the amount that would, so is that going to pressure the approach to the levy limit or not?
It's included right now in this budget for FY '24, but.
Included in R50 or in the other?
It's a town, it's the unreserved account.
But how much?
Yes, that's exactly right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Sarah, Sarah, Sarah's still here.
That's not been released publicly.
Yes, it's a public number.
Yeah.
Yes.
I wasn't listening, don't worry.
So, I think that's part of the concern as of today.
Is there enough in the?
The issue is they'll know from MYa what the health insurance cost will be sometime in late February. So, they've held back some of the capital asks that we've had as well.
In the past, it's worked in our favor, the, when the MYa stuff has come in. I don't know if it will this year.
I think they're expecting a 6% increase in health insurance premiums and it could come in high, it could come in low.
Yeah, it could, right.
It's just, it's an arbitrary, yeah, things to try to get your arm around.
We should assume high based on my experience with health insurance premiums.
All right, so are there things in the central office or facilities or what was the other category?
Food service.
Food service that we can consider.
Do it out?
To, yeah, to kind of soften this picture.
We swam, walked through each department.
Sure.
Yeah.
I actually took the time to watch the video from last year. It was revenue, by the way.
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
Just so you knew what we did. That's so funny.
He was mad that I brought Ellen a cookie at that meeting. I bring him a cookie to back him, so he pointed it out.
I brought cookies. I brought candy.
You want candy?
Yeah.
I'm going to just walk it through the, the high level. You guys have the book.
Yeah, so what are you starting with?
Well, I'm not just doing central office because we have it broken up by department. So, first one, school committee. So, our addition or add to last year's numbers, about $33,000. It's really all legal fees, special education and the regular. We're running really high. I did get the question today from members of the committee. Would you like me to just read the question as it was presented?
Yeah, definitely.
I kept these up, they're cute, ready to go, yeah.
Sure. Great.
What is the history of the school committee legal fees, i.e. how much have we spent each year in the past several years? It looks like we're adding 25K to our legal fees line item. Is that an increase for the general attorney fees or collective bargaining? Since FY '24 is not a collective bargaining year, I was unclear on what the increase was for and how it compares to previous years. So, the, the regular retainer legal fees, fiscal '21 was a little over $80,000. And we could share the documents, you don't have to read everything. Fiscal '22 was 35. Our current rate right now is $68,000 for this year. So, this, this thing's going on. Some of that's under encumbered, encumbrances right now. It may not actually get spent. On the special education side, '21 was just a few dollars less than $10,000. '22 was 13.5. And this year, with encumbrances, we're running at $88,000. So, it's been a dramatic update.
That's a huge update.
We have a lot of placement herrings, all kinds of things going on right now. I'll let my esteemed colleague, Dr. Cattano, deal with it if you want more details there. So, really, on that school committee, and I don't know why the special education legal fees is under the purview there. I think it probably should be in the special ed department. I kind of believe there was probably a reason years ago why I had to move there. Moving on, tab four in your book is the superintendent. That department, we have an increase of approximately $26,000. There's some contractual salary changes. A couple of folks on individual contracts here that are actually valid into '24. Inflation to maintain level services. And I did have a question on that as well. Is the increase in the superintendent conference line item due to attending more conferences? Although it only looks like there are three total, or do we used to pay for these conferences from the line item in the past? Yes and yes. One thing that I noticed was never budgeted was the lodging and the travel. So, that, that I added in and we did pull from various conference lines to fund that. So, it was being spent, we just didn't have the budget. So, again, that's a $26,000 increase in that department. Human resources, and wait for it, this is a big one. We actually have a reduction of $22,188. We had two staffing changes. A long-term HR director retired. A lower-cost employee moves into that role. We hired another payroll person. And I'll let Dr. Graham take any credit for that. Nice big reduction. Okay, I don't think there's anything questions for that.
Numbers, so there's no change.
Curriculum and instruction, tab number six in the book. We have a line in there that I think confuses people and I'll defer to any suggestions you have going forward. This is what's historically happened here. Is any new positions being budgeted? We're in a kind of pending teacher additions line altogether for the entire district. And I think it was twofold. It was easier to manage when we go through this process. All the new positions are in one place and the other is, for a lot of the positions in the district, we don't exactly know where they're going to land. So, if we know we're going to add a, a special education teacher, do we know what building it's going to end up sitting in at the time? Probably not. So, it's been budgeted there and then moved out. And you also sent that question in.
Yes.
So, that's why it looked like we spent nothing because actually reallocated to the account where the folks actually landed. Any questions on that one?
Yes. My only question was, what's the, and maybe it doesn't go here, but just seeing the new positions. And I can't remember if I asked this, what's the, in the current recommended budget, what are the new FTEs? Like what's the gross, the net new FTEs? I mean, I know people move around, you lose some here, you gain some there. But let's just say, so I know I'm a little off in this number, but the FTEs for last year were 467 or something like that. So, what, so what are, like this year, what?
The new ones?
Yeah, what, what's our bottom line total?
No, because I, if you look, I shifted some off.
Okay.
So, it's a really.
I mean, if you don't know it, now it's okay.
It's a 4.6 FTE was in that account.
Yeah, yeah. So, is that, is that what, so when we get asked, because we always get asked this, how many FTE are you adding and how many benefits packages does that equal? So, you're saying we're adding 4.6 FTE to our total FTE count? And I think what you told me the other day is it's not necessarily for benefit packages.
No. And so, what I calculated out to reconcile that is that just the '23 budget is 454 FTE, no fractions.
454.
With the changes in that original budget, it's 457.7. So, it's 3.7. We actually, we traded in a couple of teaching assistants as well. So, it's really a net gain of 3.7.
Oh, so that's the total. Okay.
Keep in mind that the middle school ask of the 2.0 are probably all existing employees.
Yeah.
And section social benefits.
Yeah, so there might not be any benefits package.
Am I, I'm a little confused and maybe I missed something that you just explained. But in the section about salary accounts, account 55150, which is the teacher staffing addition. Sorry? Oh, okay. Yeah, yes, CNI, yeah. So, the approved budget was $400,530 and then the adjusted budget is zero, right?
So, with your really approved budget, that new position is a $400,000 in the '23 budget.
Yeah.
But they were just held in this really temporary holding bucket. We don't know always where these positions are going to be.
Yeah.
So, okay, we started the school year, we hired a special ed teacher, it went to Locur, and we moved the budget to the Locur special ed account. So, I, I, again, I'm glad to change it up, but I'm not entirely comfortable with the way we do things here.
Well, I guess the only thing that, for me, when I look at the column that says FY '24 SUPT, it looks like, doesn't it kind of look like it's increased by 325,000? It really hasn't.
But the, the.
It has to wait down.
The number still works out.
The total amount was spread out.
Right.
Among the different lines. Right, but just that one line looks like a significant increase, but that's not real.
It's actually a reduction.
Right, so.
I think if you go back to the first page.
Yeah.
Right, that's the district-wide summary.
Yeah.
You see that?
Yeah.
How it all even, that's out.
I'm just worried about.
The look of it.
It could be confusing for people when you read it, that's all, but I.
And so, I'd rather have it in the, the best guess account.
Okay.
You can always, if we think it's going to be Locur, put it in Locur and it's a complaint, we'll move it down.
Sure, okay.
It makes more sense if you think that way going forward.
Okay, sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you.
I just didn't want to alter the model too, too much.
Yeah, I, I appreciate that, so.
The one increase I, we have in, in the CNI budget is I Ready. It was a detailed line item and that was $50,000.
Where's that under? Oh, I see.
Okay, next is financial operations, tab seven in the book.
Can I just ask a question about the CNI budget? So, Dr. Easy, the new math curriculum that we're studying, the group is looking into. So, you're expecting that then to not be an expenditure for FY '24, but for FY '25?
For FY '24, yes, we're expecting it to be an expenditure.
It's in the capital budget.
So, we propose it to be in the capital budget. And if we get, well, we shouldn't get it, it's only ask for FY '24. It's materials and equipment that fits the criteria of what the town manager sent out from CI, CIB. So, we are, we are expecting that to be approved.
And then will there be annual charges associated with that, like software charges?
So, the.
Probably.
Yes.
What, three-year contract, right?
Right, so will that be in?
That would now be in CI, more than, what, maybe 10?
I'm just wondering, is it accounted for in here or is it?
We're waiting to get it for CIB for the first year and then FY '25, we'll be doing the annual charge in CI. So, right now, you won't see it in here because we won't get it.
Haven't got there yet.
So, that, that, and the student information system are on the bubble in the capital plan. They haven't committed to it. I, I was told today, there are capital projects they want to rescind. Unless that money's freed up officially, they'll go ahead and allocate it to that. So, that sounds like we're going to get it.
Is the increase in I Ready because didn't we have like a grant or something? So, we're not really like.
We're currently on the grant portion, part of it's on the grant.
Okay.
So, we budget that number if we don't get the grant extra. So we budget that number if we don't get the grant extra.
Okay, financing operations, this tab seven in the book. Salary accounts are $7,000 lower, staff changes, including myself.
Okay, we won't touch that.
Well, let's, you have the budget before I start.
Who are you today? I wanted to know who you are today.
Does it increase in non-salary accounts about $80,000, which is all transportation, per the contract? It's not much we can do left out.
You mean the bus transport?
Correct.
Yeah.
Question posed in the facilities budget, there are non-salary increases based on expenditures this year. Typically, we have typically under budgeted for maintenance items because we need funds elsewhere. And I wondered if we're getting close to the point where we are budgeting closer to real costs.
Oh, yeah, that was my question.
Typically, I mean, it's every district kind of does the same thing. What I had them do was sit down with the fiscal '22 year and go right down the line. So you see, I get a whole lot of detail in there now, because there's so many things that were mandated to do. I have to have the elevators inspected.
Yeah.
And we have to deal with the fire suppression. There are things we have to do. So I tried to lay it out a little bit better than I have done in the past. It's still lacking a lot of detail. But we are closer to where we should be. So I see a net increase of 107,000 in what we presented. There's also a removal of 59,000 that was water and septic that's going over to the town budget with the energy. Again, we're, our buildings are a year older than they were a year ago. Already at the point now, budget-wise, where we're starting to get pension for funds. This is the amount of repairs we've had to do.
You mean this year?
Yeah, this year, yeah.
I'd love to say it has never happened before, but it happens every year.
So, yeah, we're close to the reality. This is about a $165,000 increase, if you net out what they took away for utilities. Another question for facilities. In the facilities budget, is the grounds maintenance line item increased due to the turf maintenance agreement? Or the new plan for grounds upkeep? If it's the latter, what is the plan? I actually have a detailed line item, and therefore, grounds maintenance account includes a detailed line item of $25,000 for that turf maintenance agreement.
Right. So I think my question was, sorry, that was my question. Big surprise. So my question was, is the turf the same as last, what's increasing? Is it the turf or is the grounds maintenance? Because isn't the overall increase?
The increase is all over the place.
No, but I'm looking at the line that says contract services ground maintenance, and it's going up by 28, 26, or 28, I can't remember. $28,000.
Right, 25 of that's maintenance agreement for the turf.
Right. So that's new. That's what I was asking, what part's new? So that's new.
Because I think there's an MOU that the schools are responsible for the turf, so we have to get it.
Yeah.
And if we don't, if we don't execute on that, the warranty is compromised.
Right, right.
Yeah. Okay. That was just my, I was just coming up.
Okay. Technology, tab 10 in the book. A total increase of 50,000, approximately, of which 30 is a single line item. It's part of the audiovisual classroom equipment, leaving us the last tranche. Leisha's hair, if you need any embellishment on that.
Is that why you're here?
I'm just here to support Tom's presentation, although he's all over it, 11%, 10%.
So this is the last go-around, right? This finishes the project?
Oh, no.
There's one more.
No, we have three, two more years after this. Two more years, and then we have one more year for iPads. And that will complete our putting all of our classroom hardware on sustainable leases. So we have a three-year plan right now.
I'm sorry, but I'm on the PDF version.
Oh, see, you.
What's the document number?
Tab.
I know.
Tab is called technology.
Technology.
Okay, thanks.
So is the $30,000 the sustainable lease?
That's for the AB, yes.
For the AB?
Yeah.
You have been talking about sustainable leases for a long time.
A long time. And we're almost there, I'm happy to report.
Technology's moving into almost a subscription model now, so it's a very predictable expense stream going forward. And I believe that leaves us with food service. Which is tab 20 in your book.
Can I ask a question? Sorry. The contract services for computer repair is up by like 10 grand for fiscal year '24. Why?
No, I'm not.
Pass in the book.
We got it, no, it, two reasons. Primarily, the biggest reason is us going, moving to one-to-one iPad repair, or one-to-one iPad in elementary, increased the number of iPads that we have in the district. And so those are the devices that we need money for repair, as well as teacher computers. Once in a while, there's accidents, and we have to repair teacher computers as well. So that is what we've been looking at as our, you know, based on what has happened last year and this year. We charge elementary an optional fee primarily for if families want to take them home. But not a lot of families are taking advantage of that, and we didn't get a lot of money. It's not like the middle school and the high school where we charge a fee because the devices go back and forth, and the parents want to pay the fee because the devices go back and forth, and we highly, highly encourage that. But at elementary, you know, we did, we did receive money, but it was around $1,000 this year. And that, that covers about three iPads.
And the kids don't take them home?
The kids, some of them, they do if they need to. They absolutely do what they need to. And if they are taking them home, we encourage that parents participate in the fee, as we do with all the fees that are optional. But it didn't, it didn't work in our favor because, you know, the elementary device, we don't take them home.
As much?
K to five, and so the parents aren't paying the fees. And we also have the cobos as well, three to five, that we need to repair and don't have to use those.
If you got the $35 fee from every student at the elementary level, would that decrease?
Oh, of course.
The ask? Like, would that cover? Would that cover the additional $10,000, or probably not, right?
No.
So it would still be an increase because of the overall increase in devices this year?
If parents pay in between, it would help offset the cost that I'm asking.
Wouldn't cover it.
But it wouldn't cover it.
Yeah.
And we have to deal with the devices as well, and other hardware devices that we need to repair that are used throughout, you know, is used throughout the district. Just seems like a big increase.
Yeah.
For one year, that's all.
But when did it, we've only had the elementary iPads for, what are we, on year?
Three.
Two?
It was during COVID, wasn't it?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. So it's probably because we didn't anticipate it. Oh, we didn't know, right? Like, who was going to pay the fees and that type of stuff? So it wasn't.
We highly increased the number of places in the last year.
Exactly, because elementary's a big group, but it was two years ago, I guess.
It was two years ago, but.
Probably a group that's not necessarily careful with their iPads. You might guess. Given I have a few in my house. And I mean, children, elementary, not iPads.
See, accidents do happen. Yeah, right.
Was that, wasn't there a kid, do you remember, when we first had one-to-one, they snoodled to school down the river, you know? Like, and lost their iPad, their device?
Snoodled to school?
You know, along the river, the Sudbury River, and the computer went over. I don't know, maybe it was in one of my kids' classes. I just remember it happened, like towards the end of the year. It's gone. Okay, I digress.
So that wraps up the central office facilities. Last one, now these food service. So you presented a great question, so I'm going to just start with that. It is confusing to everyone. Can you explain the change in food service's miscellaneous revenue? It looks like state reimbursement is increasing greatly. Does that mean that we no longer need to make up the deficit of miscellaneous revenue? How long, and how will that work, assuming that we actually had that much miscellaneous revenue in '23? Are we going to offer less miscellaneous items, or is it another plan that's incoming? All right. So prior to COVID, the district did not participate in the national school breakfast program. It just wasn't even offered there. That's number one. Number two, we hit COVID, and the powers that be in Washington decided they were going to pay for free lunch and breakfast. So the breakfast program came into whailin'. So that ended with fiscal '22. Now along comes fiscal '23, our current year. The state included approximately $150 million in the state budget to fund lunch and breakfast for all children. And to me, it didn't sound like a lot of money, but all the districts that are on community eligibility, most of the cities, the gateway cities, they're all being covered by USDA regardless. So we are getting funded by the state for that portion that a parent would have. So it's just in a different bucket. So you see the state revenues coming way up, and the federal went down.
So you're asking, will the miscellaneous revenue carry us forward?
Well, I guess what I was asking is, in FY23, it says miscellaneous revenue is $1 million. So I assume that's share selling things that equal $1 million. Next year, we're only budgeting 248,000 for that, I assume, because we're getting this big state reimbursement.
Well, the '23 budget didn't account for the state reimbursement. When you approved this budget, it was assumed the parents would be paying for meals again.
Right.
Right? So it was budgeted as miscellaneous revenue because it would have done. And now it's coming in through the state line.
Oh, so you're saying she, this year she doesn't have to sell that much?
No, but I will tell you, our meal counts are up dramatically. First of all, everybody gets free lunch and breakfast, so they're taking advantage of it, which is a great thing. So again, it's a self-funded operation. If she, the more meals she pushes out, the more revenue we get, and it covers the bills. She's doing this with almost zero increase in labor. And so my hat's off to Cheryl Jones, she's doing a fantastic job.
She is a great. So that means this year, they don't have to sell as much miscellaneous stuff as they thought?
I don't think we have to sell any, but she's still selling it.
And miscellaneous stuff is like snacks?
Alacard items, yeah.
Stuff my kids go and buy.
Yeah, exactly.
Instead of just free lunch.
Yeah.
It still has to meet the criteria of the program.
But that, okay, so we get revenue from the snacks. That probably works out well because people aren't bringing any food from home, so they have to, yeah, okay.
Or they're taking the free meal and would be reimbursed by the state.
Right, right, yeah. I see.
And it all works out in the end, because you can only have so much in that account.
Right.
Yeah. So we're not selling too much.
It's a great problem to have.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay, great.
So that was self-funded. I, I don't think there's anyone in my peer group in the state that believes that the Commonwealth's going to pull that out of the budget. I think it's there to stay.
That's so interesting, after all these years, that that was how, that that's what came out of COVID essentially. Right, that's great.
Unless we have a major recession, then they're going to really start looking at it, but that's when folks need the most. So I really feel that, personally, my opinion is it's untouchable in the budget.
Yeah. And what you're saying is that the state, because some of the cities and towns are still funded by the federal government, that that frees up the state money to go to everyone else, basically.
When they first proposed putting that, that number in the budget, I, just on the back of a napkin, it didn't seem like it would make it down.
Yeah.
But then you pull out Boston, and Lowell, and Framingham, there are all of those kids eating for free regardless on the community eligibility program. So that's all fully funded by the.
So is it just for the kids, or the staff gets the lunch, too?
No, just the kids.
They don't care about your nutrition?
No. I think that's it for tonight. I do have another question about athletics.
But that's later on.
I can hold it, or I can answer it.
You might as well hold it, please. Thank you.
It's been a long, it's been a long evening.
This is, I do want to say thank you, though, for the binder.
Yeah.
Yeah, it would be better next time.
No, but it's.
No, it's really good.
What I want to do is take the other document I found, and whether we can have it or not, the whole vacation doing, that special revenue.
Remember the special revenue front book?
Yeah, I want to put that in a blender.
Okay, great.
So we can just break it up that way. So I have all, everything except the Pat Keef stuff ready to go. So soon as, I'm meeting with her Friday morning.
Okay.
We'll just put it together, and I'll send the PDF out.
Okay.
Thank you, Tom.
Yeah, thank you very much. So I had a question. I wish Dr. Easy was here, because I think that this is a question that we probably have to ask him with him. So shall I wait? Do we want to move on and come back?
Yeah, I mean.
I'll move the view of approval consent agenda.
Okay, just, sorry, a second?
A second.
Okay, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, no one's opposed, consent agenda approved?
Can I ask you where the PDF is that you were looking at?
Oh, it's on the web, the district website.
Oh, it's already up there?
Yeah.
Okay, cool, thank you.
I can send you a link if you want.
No, I'll go find it, that's okay, thank you.
So is the presentation from last time, too?
Oh, okay, cool.
Yep.
I just figured I.
I have a matter not anticipated.
Okay. Do you want to go with that, and then once Dr. Easy comes back, we'll go back to the question?
So I had asked, last week or whatever, when I started the pay attention this meeting, I asked that we have the police department sort of tell us where they were. Someone mentioned it in the commisite, where they were investigating the racist graffiti. And I honestly, my brain was so overwhelmed by what happened earlier, I forgot to mention the source of it. So I bring it up as a matter not anticipated.
Yep.
So I just want to know what people think about that. I would really like to know what's happened, and what, if anything, they've found. And I also think we kind of have a responsibility to follow up on it, so I'm suggesting that. And I suggested it for this meeting, but I guess for some reason it didn't, it wasn't able to happen this meeting. But I would like to hear from the police department about what investigation they've done in terms of looking into who might have done the racist graffiti. And, and what they've learned. I assume they're investigating. I haven't even talked to anyone. I just feel like I should follow up.
Okay. So are you asking the committee how they feel about that?
Yes, I'm asking the committee what they think about that, because that was something I thought of, so.
Okay. People have thoughts to share?
Thank you.
I actually thought that's why Chief Burman was here.
Oh.
But I guess not.
I mean, I can follow up on my own, I guess. There's nothing stopping me. I just thought that as a committee, we should.
I would like to know what's going on, and if steps are, like, I would assume, I'm not going to say if steps are being taken, but what steps are being taken? I don't know the right way to get the information. Is it for him to come to a meeting? Is there, what's the best way? Because I do feel very in the dark, and I feel like that this is something important to us.
I do, too, and I also feel like it would be, I feel like we've kind of gotten a couple of comments in writing, and then there was a person mentioned it here. I feel like we have a responsibility, and so, and I also think the public would, would want to know what steps are being taken to, I don't know, maybe it's my, we go around, I just feel like we should follow up on that.
I, yeah, I don't like being in the dark, so I don't know if, and I, I want to make sure we, because, I mean, I just, I don't, I have so many thoughts that I don't even know what I'm saying right now, so.
I'll be honest, as I said earlier, I was really, instantly, I'm really angry, and I want to know who did it. And if I can't ever know who did it, I want to know what steps were taken by the town to find out.
Well, I would hope that. And I don't know if there, and I don't know if this still falls as a matter not anticipated, but our, like, is there anything we can do? Because I feel like we do have a responsibility to Dr. Easy for his safety as our employee, like, and is there anything we as a committee can do to help aid this process? Whether it's, I don't even know if it's appropriate that we could hire an outside investigator, or like, find like a PI or somebody to like actually dig in if.
That would be, I think that.
I don't know if that's allowable. I don't know if that's allowable, or what line item that falls in.
I would, I would like to do anything we can, really, I would. I think it's such a horrible event, you know, in our town, and it's connected to the schools, and it's directed at the superintendent of schools, um, well, it was directed primarily at him, and then has impacted the whole community, I would like to do anything we can do to, to put some closure, and to identify what happened if we can, and put some closure around, at least having made the effort.
Yep.
Or is there a way, Chris, you could get an update and bring it to us? Would that be a more appropriate venue, and then see if there are steps that we could take to, because I feel like, I don't know anything about law enforcement, but I would assume the sooner you investigate something, the better.
Right, so I guess my thoughts are, I agree that, um, we should do anything, you know, the community, please, anything to get to the bottom of it should be done. What's, like, unclear to me is sort of the boundaries between the police department, you know, role, and what, um, what we could expect if we were to get an update from the police department, you know? But if the committee would like me to reach out to the chief for an update, if that's what the committee would like as a way to get an update, I can do that.
I would, and I would also maybe, maybe talk to the board of selectmen too, because this is also a town, um, it's not just the school committee, right?
Right, right.
It's, it's the entire town management's responsibility. So maybe talk to the chief, or talk also to Cherry, and see if she's okay with that, and is that okay? Or do people want the chief to come here and talk to us directly?
No, I don't think, I'm not very open.
Okay.
All right.
Okay. Okay.
All right, that was my matter not anticipated, sorry.
Okay, no worries.
I have a point too, I think.
Okay.
Diane should have put us, should have forwarded an email to the rest of the committee.
I don't, I just do not, because I can right now.
So it's, it's simple, it's, it's a email, um, in regards to, um, maybe this, I'm sorry, Needham is leading the charge in applying for a grant for electric buses, and, um, they reached out to, to Tom and I in regards to whether or not we want to be a part of that grant application. So I would need to send just a statement of interest on my letterhead to them by, by Friday. So what is it going to bring it to the committee to see if you would be in favor of that?
Yes.
I think so.
That's a great idea.
Definitely, I guess, and I'm sorry, I don't mean to interrupt, my only question is just about, like, our current contract and how that all works.
Right, I don't think it interferes with our current plan then.
It doesn't, okay, okay.
Is it still Dr. Easy fairly far, because last time I talked to, who was Ellen Tong, right?
Yeah, Ellen Tong, yeah.
It was a, it was fairly far in the future that you were going to be able to have electric buses in New England because of the weather.
You know, I, I don't know exactly where we are with that, but it seems like if they're going to propose a grant for district to apply for, then kind of spread out the process.
Yeah.
But I think before the long term, we work, and last time, we conversed about it.
So I would just say, and Tom knows the context with these people, that once you apply, you should let the, um, you know, the group, the, the bus group, yeah, the under, the, that guy, and I can't remember his name unfortunately, so I don't want to call him that guy, but I am, we should let him know that we're applying for this, which, by the way, did we hear back on that grant?
Yeah, we did get it. Needham and a couple of other districts are actually, like, getting involved with some regional research projects, they look into this, and they've, they've requested like a hundred other districts to jump on here, so.
Oh, great.
The fact that there might be a little scale.
Yeah, will be really helpful, right?
Empetus to this law.
So maybe when you're done with all of the budget work, you guys could just bring back information on what they're doing, yeah.
Can we go backwards for one quick second to the last matter not anticipated? Dr. Easy, we didn't ask you what you would like us to do in regards to getting information from the police.
From the police? I guess I really haven't really thought about it, but I, I, it's, I don't, so it's not, say, the school committee issue, because this is a town issue, this is, you know, a crime of the town, right? So I don't know how much this board should be, I mean, obviously, as residents, you can always get information, but how much of it do you bring into you as a board, as, as opposed to the town really addressing this as a town issue?
I just feel, especially after the experience of earlier in this meeting, I feel really, really strongly that I want to know, and I can go ask as a citizen, but I feel, and I do want to know as a citizen, just a resident of Whalen and a taxpayer, right? But as, having sat on this board for 11 years, I really want to know. And so I, that's why I raised it, because I just am absolutely furious, and I want to be able to understand what they're doing, and if I feel like they're not doing enough, I won't be able to say that, sorry. I know I'm not a cop, but...
We have been doing updates.
Yeah.
But not in great detail, it is still an active investigation.
I know, I know, they won't, I know, they won't, I know they won't do that, I just want, and I want the public, and the families, and the students, and the teachers to know that we care enough to pursue that. I just feel really strongly about that.
And I will say, my interactions with the Whalen Police Department, the chief, the detectives involved in this case, they are on fire on this, and there's a really high sense of urgency.
Excellent.
So I, I don't see them letting off the accelerator.
Right, well, good, well, so then if they just come and tell us that, or, maybe they could, if you guys don't want to, I'm happy to just go by myself, or, or just Chris, that's fine, I just feel, I feel responsible, and I want to pursue that.
I feel really strongly that we should stay in our lane, and that we should allow the police department to do what their job is, and to allow the town, the select board to address it at the town level, and that we should do everything we can to support Dr. Easy and make him feel safe at school, but that, like, this is not our investigation, it's not what we're charged with, and I want to show we support him, and we support the community, and it's not okay, and it's not accepted, but I just don't feel like it's our place to ask for something that we're not necessarily entitled to. Um, and I'd prefer that if the police chief were to feel, or someone from that department were to feel like we needed to get involved, or he wanted to provide some sort of update, I'd rather it come from them, or come out to the community as a whole, instead of us inserting ourselves into it. That's how I feel.
I think we, I respectfully disagree.
That's fine.
So maybe it's a conversation for Chris that with Cherry? To figure out, like, the town, yeah?
The lanes, and so forth.
Not only that, but it didn't, just to round it out, it didn't happen on school property.
No, it didn't, it happened at the community pool.
Right, and I also think it's a really slippery slope from that perspective.
Okay, I will do my best to take all of that information and deliver on it.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, before we go into executive session, can I do my two questions now that Dr. Easy's back?
Sure.
Is that okay, Chris?
Uh, yeah.
Or did you have something else?
No, no, go for it.
So on the budget, Dr. Easy, I just wanted to ask this while you were here. So, the questions that we all send in, that Tom is nicely curating answers for, would it be okay if the document were, are you making a document with that, you think, that we get a copy of that periodically?
Yeah, I think so.
We can share it.
Okay, well, you can't share the Google Doc. You can't share the Google Doc with us.
Why not?
Because I think it's an open meeting law, but I don't think...
We're not discussing...
Okay, that's true, but everyone would have to agree to it.
What if it's only view only?
Yeah, view only, it's fine. Yeah, 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 view only, it's fine.
Right, and that was done just before I came over here tonight, so I didn't have time to do that.
No, that's fine, I just didn't know if that was the plan. Okay, then my, my other question was something that Tom mentioned, so, for everybody, on the ninth, we're talking about special ed, and the finance committee would like to post a meeting, they're going to post a meeting to attend, so they can hear about special ed, because, I don't want to put words in your mouth, but according to Tom, they had a lot of questions about the big increase in special ed, and they'd like to ask questions, and Tom was asking me if we've done that before, and we have, we've had the finance committee be able to ask questions, we just have to put it on our agenda, you know, that we're meeting, so I wanted to see if everyone was okay.
So is that more like a joint meeting with the government and us?
Well, kind of, but only for that portion, only for the special ed portion.
Okay.
How does everyone feel about that?
That's fine, we've done that before.
Yeah, we've done it before. So they would be free to ask questions, whereas, you know, usually the audience, or the attendees don't ask questions.
Right.
Okay. Okay, so if everyone's good with that, I'm saying it out loud, so it'll be on the agenda.
Okay.
We just have to put the right wording that they're going to attend, quit that part. Okay, those are my questions.
Is everything, okay. Is that everything? Can we move to executive session?
Yeah, do we have to vote on the buses, the grant, or no?
Yeah. Okay. Move to enter executive session for the purposes of discussing strategy with respect to collective bargaining with the Whalen Teachers Association as permitted by MGL Chapter 30A, Section 2183. As a discussion in an open session, may I have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the school committee? Discussing strategy with respect to collective bargaining with Whalen Educational Secretaries Association as permitted by MGL Chapter 30A, Section 2183, as a discussion in an open session may have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the school committee. Discussion of open meeting law complaints against the school committee filed on November 16, 2022 by Kimberley Sklar-Rykel and December 6, 2022 by George Harris and Kimberley Sklar-Rykel as permitted by MGL Chapter 30A, Section 21A1, and approving executive session minutes as permitted by MGL Chapter 30A, Section 22 for November 30, 2022. The participants, the school committee will be joined by Dr. Omar Easy, the superintendent, Paragraph Assistant Superintendent, and Diane Maribel, the recording secretary, and Sarah Sontag, the WTA president.